Administration Building, Highway Two, Sandpoint, Idaho United States of America, North America, Earth, Third Rock from the Sun, Delta Quadrant. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live via you Zoom and YouTube. This episode is brought to you by Chloroplasts. You can live without them, but not for long. If you like what you see here, please click the like button. If you don't want to miss future episodes, be sure to subscribe and ring that bell. It helps us out a lot. Please silence your pagers, digital watch alarms, personal digital assistants, and any other electronic devices. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on my nation and their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. I have roll call the Commissioners from my left, please.
Mr. Bates, please, or President?
Mr. Clark from Mr. Marl, President, I'm chairing tonight.
Mr. Paulson, President.
We have a quorum with four present. We have one Commissioner missing right now. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special needs, special assistance to see here, participate in these hearings, these proceedings? Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Commissioners and staff members, any changes to the agenda for this hearing? The minutes from our last meeting held June twenty, oh, May, May twenty second were held, made available for the Commission to review. Does any Commissioner or staff member appear to correct those minutes? Minutes are approved under the consent agenda. For those who may not be familiar with these hearings, I'll introduce the process now. The gentlemen to my left and right and myself are zoning Commissioners. We are volunteers. We serve on this commission because we live in Bonner County. We work in Bonner County. We have friends and family in Bonner County, and we love Bonner County. Our job is to objectively review zoning and land use applications. We are not employees of the county. We're not politically elected. We are not paid for this service. We review these applications as best we can with support from the professionals in the Bonner County Planning Department and other county and state departments and agencies. The zoning commission are a quasi judicial body, meaning that we don't make the rules. We follow the rules in this. Uh, we are contrasted to the planning commission, a separate group of people. Who also meet here a couple of times a month, who are quasi legislative, meaning that they make any of the rules that we follow here. The folks to my left and your right are members of staff. Modern County Plan Department. Staff members are employees of the county and subject matter experts in the areas of zoning, planning permitting. They spend countless hours helping professionals and DIYers properly plan projects that affect. Land use. The affect is filters, ensuring that what comes before this commission is well prepared. Indeed, there are many applications. And requests that never make it to these public hearings because the proposal is simply incompatible with county code or because they can be handled. In the planning office. Public are also present here tonight. The commission solicits public testimony that helps the commission to learn about facts relevant to these files, facts that may not have been known. To the applicant, the representative, or plant department staff before this meeting. We accept public testimony in written form for these hearings. We appreciate written testimony because we have. More time to review those before these hearings. Tonight, we have four files to review. We have zero applications for conditional use permit, zero applications for variance. We have two applications for zone change, and first we have two applications for subdivisions. The procedure for hearing one file of those four is as follows. First, staff will present. On the roster, I'm on my left, your right. Then the applicant and/or their representatives. Presents an overview of the project, again, usually from the same rostrum. The commission may ask questions of staff and the applicant normally at the end of their presentations. The commission then opens the hearing for public testimony, and I'll explain the rules for public testimony when we get to that point. The applicant and staff have an opportunity to rebut new information presented in public testimony. Finally, the commission will close public testimony, deliberate. Cross your fingers, vote. For each file, if a recess, no, that's. Those are notes for me. Uh, the first file tonight. This file S one dash twenty five. Long plat Deerfield. The applicant is requesting to subdivide and flat an approximately thirty-two point six seven acre parcel into twenty-four residential lots ranging from approximately one to three acres each. And one stormwater tract. The property is on suburban, the property, the subject property is located off Bald Mountain Road. In section sixteen, township fifty-seven north, range two west, Boise, Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho open. Does any Commissioner have any ex parte communication or conflict of interest to disclose regarding this application? I do not. Fabulous. Staff, your turn.
With you Commissioner, uh, Jason Johnson, Bonner County Flanning. Here to present file S zero 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 one dash two five, uh, Deerfield subdivision. So the applicant is requesting to subdivide and plat approximately thirty-two point six seven acres. Into twenty-four lots ranging from approximately one to three acres each with one stormwater tract. Uh, the property is zone suburban. Subject property is located off of Baldi Mountain Road. Project is located in the Serengeth Heights Water District, Northside Fire District Service Area. And within the area of impact for the city of Sandpoint. So on the screen there is a overview of the site highlighted in blue, along with the dates that the required noticing was accomplished on this file. Site is being proposed for residential use. Um, the site has frontage on it. It's accessed via Baldi Mountain Road. It's paved county owned, county maintained road. Access will be provided through the subdivision via the planned Deerfield Drive. Deerfield Drive will be a privately maintained public road with paved surface. Right away with this plan to be sixty feet and the travel width of the proposed road is planned to be twenty-four feet. Services will come from Serengeth Heights Water District Individual Septic System. Um, a vista for the application. Comment was received from Northern Lights, but an hour before the hearing, um, I was notified that they submitted their comment under the wrong file number. So. Yeah, uh, Northside Fire District, um, solid waste disposal to the responsibility of individual lot owners, and then it's within Lake Pontcharlais School District number eighty-four. So the site generally slopes, uh, to the south with the highest point being in the northeast corner of the site. Um, most of the slopes are down on the open space stormwater lot. In the southeast portion of the plat. Uh, upland portion have moderate slopes of one to eight percent. The site does contain wetlands, uh, mapped stream. And floodplain, that's all in the south of the, of the lot. So the site itself is zoned as suburban for residential use. And all around it is suburban zoning with a residential use, with the exception that it is adjacent to the city of Sandpoint in the east. There's a zoomed in aerial of the site. The site is zoned as suburban with a suburban growth area land use designation. Uh, the mapped wetlands are down there. Um, a delineated wetland report was submitted that makes it significantly smaller, but that's what's mapped in the county system. Uh, slopes are on the south side of a. Parcel there, uh, steep slopes being in red over that is, uh, slopes over thirty percent. The entire site is fairly uniform soil with mission silo soil type. Um, hydrology for the site, there's the creek down in the south of the parcel there. Uh, the creek is associated with an A-zone floodplain in the southern portion of the parcel. The plat is kind of large, so it's in two images. This is the top part of the plat right here. And then the bottom part in this second image, it wasn't really possible to get it onto one screen. It's too tall. So these are the agencies that commented, um. Again, as mentioned just about an hour ago, that Northern Lights submitted their comment on an incorrect file number, uh, but. All the other agencies that have commented are listed there. Um, those are the agencies that commented as of the date of staff report publication. Any comments that were received after the staff report publication couldn't be included in this presentation, but were forwarded to the zoning commission. Quite a few standards apply to a subdivision review. Those are on the screen here, and we'll go through each of these, uh, individually here. So the application was routed to the city of Sandpoint for comment and to agencies for comment. The lots in the subdivision are proposed to be served by individual septic systems and the Serengeth Heights Water District. Lots of the subdivision are proposed to be served by individual septic systems. And, um, this must be included on the face of the final platform, the subdivision. They are required to get a sanitary restriction lift prior to final plat, and the sanitary restriction lift is going to have to be signed off by the Panhandle Health District. So the depth to width ratio of the lots, the proposed subdivision are all well under the required ratios. Um, as for the lots that have submerged lands on them, uh, these lots are well beyond the one acre minimum. And, uh, no submerged lands are being counted when we are evaluating whether or not, uh, the minimum parcel size is being met by this plat. Urban services are being provided in the form of water, but again, they are, uh, going with subject on these individual lots that gets them down to the. One acre instead of the two and a half acres that would normally be, normally be for the suburban zone if they were on subject and well. Again, must include a sanitary restriction lift on the final plat. Fire plan and fire risk assessment was submitted. And, uh, conditions of approval have been added to make sure that that gets properly finalized prior to final plat. Uh, the road name has been reserved. Road name is going to be Deerfield Drive. A condition has been added to make sure that that appears on the final plat. There are no private roads proposed in the subdivision. All lots proposed will have direct frontage and access on public roads. Trails and parks doesn't comply because the county does not have an approved trails plan. The site is being designed around natural hazards. The natural hazard areas are mostly to the southernmost portion of the site, as you saw. As far as the floodplain goes on the site, there are some special requirements associated with that. They are currently, the applicants are currently working with FEMA on that. To get a letter of map change to either establish a base flood elevation for the site. Or to, um. Remove the site completely from the floodplain. That will be determined by FEMA and not by this department. The, we have reviewed it, and it is compliant with the environmental standards and B C R C twelve dash seven. And the application was deemed complete by staff, and the plat plat was stamped by a licensed Idaho surveyor. There is a condition of approval because not all adjoining landowners were properly shown their respective places of ownership on the plat. Staff does have the ability to find that out, uh, independently, but that's still a requirement and still needs to be met. Land contours appear to be missing on the face of the plat. There's also a condition of approval for that. Um, staff has the ability to see land contours without it, but it's still a requirement to code and still needs to be submitted prior to final plat. Location of water courses needs to be mapped. Floodplains need to be mapped on the final plat. That's included in the conditions of approval. Um, the plat was prepared and stamped by a professional surveyor, so existing wells, springs, wetland boundaries and whatnot have been shown or will be shown on the final plat. Proposed method of water supply, sewage and waste disposal are all addressed on the face of the plat. The plat does give the purpose for parcels, um. On the face of the plat that are reserved for common use or for the public. There is a statement of use for all the other lots as well, so this complies. Preliminary road design plans were submitted and have been reviewed. Ultimately, before final plat, the road design has to be finalized, and that road design has to be approved by Bonner County Road and Bridge. Uh, if it isn't, we can't go to final plat. The application was filed properly, and we are holding public hearings on this matter. These are mostly requirements for final plat. Um, or requirements that will be met when the conclusions of law are drawn up for this file. These are the requirements for final plat that are not applicable at this stage. That's twelve, six, four, six, and twelve, six, four, seven. Twelve, seven, one shorelines is applicable. Uh, subdivisions are not allowed, are not disallowed on lands containing shorelines. We can still do it. They're just different requirements. Uh, for example, the shoreline vegetative buffer management area has to be delineated on the final plat. And applicants for any development in the future in this subdivision still must comply with all shoreline rules in force in Bonner County at the time of development applications. The applicant did submit grading and stormwater management and erosion control plans. Those have been reviewed by engineering ultimately, uh, before final plat. That's going to be part of the final improvement plan, and that has to be finally approved by Bonner County engineer, uh, where we can't go to final plat. The subdivider did submit a professional wetland and stream delineation to this file, and, uh, that will be shown on the face of the final plat. No local, state, or federal agency has identified the presence of any critical wildlife habitats on the site. Proposal is being designed around the existing natural hazards. Most of the slopes are in the southernmost portion of this project, and. Majority of those slopes in the south are on the HOA open space stormwater lot. As far as flood damage prevention goes, uh, depending upon the outcome of the letter of map change process between the applicants and FEMA, they may be required to get a floodplain development permit. Uh, there are subdivision standards in B C R C Title fourteen, which is the flood code. Um, if the letter of map change ultimately removes this whole area from the floodplain, then that won't apply. Because if you're not in the floodplain, Title fourteen doesn't apply to you. This proposal was reviewed against the comprehensive plan policies and the implementation component, and does not appear to be in conflict. And this was discussed in detail in the staff report that was submitted to the commission. As far as proposed conditions of approval go, there are quite a few. Most of them are pretty standard. A few of them are unique to this project. Uh, as previously mentioned, the sanitary restriction lift is required on the face of the plat. This must be, uh, this restriction left has to have space for the signature of an appropriate representative of Panhandle Health. Easements and constraints on building placement have to be shown on the face of the plat. This condition is huge, but ultimately it comes down to a fire protection plan. There are five options that an applicant has in a plat. For protection from fire, they can pick one, and one of those has to be done prior to final plat. This boilerplate language that would go on any subdivision of this nature. We need unique road names, uh, per condition four. If the road name isn't unique, it has to be changed. Uh, the road name has been reserved. Uh, and it has been confirmed to be a unique road. Um, so that's condition five, but that was made before it was reserved. Um, condition six, not all the adjoining owners were shown. This has to be corrected prior to final plat. Um, because we got that comment from Northern Lights, there was some confusion on who serves. Um, a vista was listed in the application by the applicant, but then we got a comment from Northern Lights under this final number. And so we weren't sure. It looks like a vista probably does serve. Because it, like I said, an hour before the hearing, we found out that they submitted under the wrong file number. Uh, looks like there's some contours missing off the face of the plat. Staff still has access to this information. Uh, without that, but it's still a code requirement that needs to be presented. Because the lots are less than five acres, they need direct frontage on a public road. As previously mentioned, the road design plan has been submitted and will be finalized prior to final plat. Condition ten is just the standard expiration date for a plat of this nature. Uh, nothing special about that. Condition eleven is again a boilerplate condition about when the improvements can begin to be constructed on the plat. Condition twelve as well, when the subdivider can begin construction of improvements on the plat. These are standard boilerplate conditions. Water courses are missing on the submitted plat. The final plat shall be amended to show the location of water courses and the approximate floodplain. S- condition fourteen, again, a lot of words, but ultimately gives the, it's a boilerplate condition, standard on the plat like this. Uh, code allows a subdivider to bond for improvements instead of performing them themselves. Um, and that's just, that's an option that's given to them. Condition fifteen is just restating that you have to do your final plat requirements in those three sections of code right there prior to final plat. The applicant did submit their stormwater erosion control plan. Um, this plan is, has to be updated and resubmitted, uh, based on this hearing and based on review from Bonner County engineers. And has to be finalized prior to final plat. As mentioned before, portion of the site is located within a designated flood zone. And until they finish, until the applicant finishes the letter of map change process with FEMA. Staff doesn't know what direction it's going to take. Either they're going to be removed from the floodplain, or they'll get a floodplain development permit for the floodplain concerns on the lot, and Title fourteen has its own requirements for that. Condition eighteen, again, they have to get an FDP if they're not removed from the floodplain. Condition nineteen, uh. After additional review of the B C R C fourteen requirements for subdivision, staff would actually recommend striking this. Condition nineteen is in the staff report. So if. The commission is inclined to just adopt the staff report as written, staff would strongly recommend striking condition nineteen. It's not necessary. Shoreline vegetative buffer management area needs to be delineated on the final plat. And that's just, that's standard. Any, any, uh, future development on the lot has to comply with the shoreline rules enforced at the time the development is proposed. If this plat is, is approved. And then the condition twenty-two, we do have some steep slopes. If they're going to be developed on, a geotechnical analysis is required. That isn't even unique to plots. That's just unique to, that's just any developments in the county on a slope greater than thirty percent is going to have that requirement. That concludes my presentation. Um, these are the, again, the two images of the plat in question. Uh, if there are any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, there, well, creek at the southeast end of the property. Uh, I think it's Serengeth Creek, response, stuff, or. I, I noticed in the. Think it was the wetland delineation report, the competition, or fish bearing. If there are buffer requirements for that and do that, does the, does their proposal meet?
Um, there's buffer requirements for structures. Uh, the fact that it's fish bearing, our code doesn't address that. And, um, it's, it's addressed to the shoreline code twelve, seven, one. Um, as mentioned in the presentation in the staff report, um, it'll be reviewed at the time of application for a building location permit on there. Yes, setbacks will be applied. Uh, setback will probably be seventy-five feet. Yeah.
Any questions for Steph? I had one, uh, IDFG did submit a. Response comment. Looked like it was.
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, that also was under the wrong file name. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I honestly did. I didn't even see that in my review. It never made it into the folders that I look at, but I wasn't informed prior to the hearing IDFG submitted and also under the wrong. It was supposed to go for a short subdivision, not this thing.
All right. Thanks, Jason. It's the applicant, their representative present tonight.
I think they're bringing up my presentation. For the record, I'm Laura Cannon. I'm with H M H Engineering. And I'm here with Dan Tadic. He is our project engineer on the, on this site. Uh, we are here representing the applicants and. All right. Again, I'm Laura Cannon with H M H Engineering. I'm a planner for the company and again with Dan Tadic, the project engineer representing the applicant for the Deerfield subdivision. Um, Mr. Johnson did a very thorough job going through all the code requirements, so I apologize if I'm. Being repetitive on some of the things that he covered, but I will try not to, uh, spend too much time on things that he's already covered. So the property owner is Deerfield LLC, and the applicant is Gary Chicken Dance. And the requested, um, action tonight is recommendation of approval of the twenty-four lot subdivision in Bonner County. As Mr. Johnson indicated before, the property is located off of, uh, Baldi Mountain Road. Just west of the city limits of Sandpoint, and it actually is touching the city limits on that southeastern corner, and that is the public disc golf course property that you can see there. Um, twenty-four lot subdivision with one stormwater tract. Um, this is the overall subdivision layout. It might be a little easier to see on this orientation versus split onto two screens. So it's split into two blocks with twenty-four lots, and then the stormwater tract down here in the southeastern corner. Where those slopes are most significant, and we have that interaction with Serengeth Creek. The land is currently vacant with slight topography that drains from the northeast to the southwest. And, um, that southernmost portion again is Serengeth Creek and has the steepest slopes. The water provider is Serengeth Heights Water District, and we do have a will serve letter from them indicating that they will serve the subdivision. And we also have, uh, approved construction, and that should say from Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. I apologize, we did not catch that error before, but it should be Q. And again, individual septic and this, um. The septic locations and test pits were approved by PhD. And to clarify, a vista is the electric well and gas provider. Looking at the surrounding land uses, uh, most of the lots in the neighborhood are large lot residential. Um, with again, exception to that eastern property, which is the big one disc golf course within the city of Sandpoint city limits. And so those are all considered compatible uses with a residential subdivision. Um, looking at the code for Bonner County for preliminary plat subdivision, section A is that the proposed subdivision is in accordance with the purposes of the title of the zoning district in which the land is located. So looking at zoning, the property is currently zoned suburban, which does allow for one lot, or excuse me, one acre lot. Properties, which is what the applicant is seeking with exception to one of the southern lots, which is approximately three acres, and then the stormwater tract. The comprehensive plan is currently being updated, but the current land use designation is suburban growth area. And the proposed land use designation is suburban residential. So both of those comp plan designations are in line with the proposed use. Section B is that the site is physically suitable for the proposed development. Again, as the planning staff mentioned and reviewed in their staff report. The topography is relatively moderate with slopes from one to eight percent with some seasonal drainages. And is overall suitable um, with zoning and compatible land uses in the vicinity. The next requirement is, is that the design of the proposed subdivision will not adversely impact Bonner County's natural resources. As identified in the comprehensive plan, any adverse impacts or potential for impact shall be mitigated as conditions of approval. So I'm going to just touch on those natural resources. Uh, first, we're going to look at the steep topography and Serenka Creek. So again, as Mr. Johnson indicated, those red areas on the white are, are areas of over thirty percent. And those areas primarily occur on the south, southern lots where is the um, stormwater tract in the southeast corner. And then you can see there's a relatively flat area here. Um, just north of the slope in Serenka Creek, which is where the building pad is located for, I believe it's lot ten. Um, also touching on uh, FEMA's regulations. So there are actually two FEMA's flood zones in the vicinity. Um, they are Serenka Creek to the south and Chuck Slu to the east. And they are both zone A flood plains. Bonner County code requires that uh, all developments over five acres go through a me- uh, letter of map revision or a letter of map change. So the applicant has applied for a letter of map revision or a LOMAR with FEMA, and that application is currently under review. Okay, section D is that the public and private sec- services, including but not limited to water, sewer service, solid waste, fire protection, emergency services, and school facilities and transportation, which will serve the proposed subdivision are adequate for the needs of the future residents or users. Again, uh, staff sent out a um, notice for public agencies to comment on this application. Most of them had either no comments or minor comments that were um, not overly impactful to the overall development or with restricted development. The applicant did work with the um, Northside Fire District to come up with a fire protection plan. And as such, it resulted in two variants as being requested. The first is that, that he put in a community fire suppression water storage tank, which would be at a uh, central location. And a hydrant connection and that, that area and location would have to be approved by Northside Fire and meet their requirements. And then the second variance is that the developer install a single ninety thousand gallon community fire suppression water storage tank. Complete with the hydrant and connection at the central location, meeting the Northside Fire District requirements. And that would allow for construction of homes having a fire flow calculation area in excess of thirty-six hundred square feet. And this uh, central location is actually located on the stormwater tract in the southeast corner. And this was reviewed and approved by the fire district to have that water storage tank in that northern ladder section before the steep slopes on that stormwater tract. The next requirement is that the proposed subdivision will not cause circumstances to exist that will call, cause future residents or the public at large to be exposed to hazards or health and safety issues. And again, this goes back to both the natural resources and the emergency services, and we just covered both of those items. So I'm not going to reiterate anything else on that. The next is that the design of the proposed subdivision or related improvements will provide for coordinated access with the con- uh, excuse me, with the county system of roads. And with adjacent properties and will not impede the use of the public easements for access to or through the proposed subdivision. The proposed transportation system is designed to adequately and safely serve the future residents or users without adversely impacting the existing transportation system by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazards or congestion. The applicant has worked with uh, Bonner County Road and Bridge, and we have um, designed a layout that has been suitable and meets their requirements. Um, the road was aligned with the drive directly to the north across Baldi Mountain Road. And there's good uh, line of visibility for um, traffic coming in or out of Deerfield Drive on that. We've also put connectivity through the road. It is a public, publicly dedicated road that will be privately maintained. And it accounts for potential future extension of services and roadway. Where it goes kind of that U shape. And then it dead ends in the hammerhead, and that is for emergency services to be able to turn around. And so we have addressed all transportation issues that Road and Bridge had and requirements. Next is that the proposed subdivision is designed to comply with the design criteria for subdivisions set forth in chapter six point two of this chapter. And again, staff and Mr. Johnson went through all of that and very thoroughly, and they have deemed that we have met those requirements. So again, this is just that layout for one final review. I will point out since it's easier to see in here. I can find my mouse. Right here is that fire storage tank. And I, I did misspeak. I said it was on the stormwater tract. It looks like it is on lot ten next to the stormwater tract. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Questions for the applicants represent.
I do have a couple of questions. Uh, next up is Tatum. The fire tank, is that above rated?
I'll let Dan speak to that.
Uh, Dan Tadic, uh, engineer with H M H Engineering. Uh, that is a below drown tank as discussed with the Northside Fire District, so it'll have a standpipe system for them to draw water from, from the tank.
Um, the only other question I saw or that I have, I saw, I saw some public comments that we received that had questions or accepted. Uh, groundwater, I want to elaborate a little bit more on that, just any of the concerns or kind of come out a little bit.
Sure.
Um, or that no sites, we, you mentioned there, they've already been, uh, the location of the test bits are already being approved. Maybe you can cover that for me?
Sure. Uh, as a early step in the process, we engage Panhandle Health as they do for projects of this scale and size to conduct a preliminary soils analysis on the site. Uh, they dug test pits in the vicinity of all lots. Uh, I believe they dug over twenty total, close to twenty-four. Um, and concluded that the septic system is possible on, at all the pits that they dug. Either a uh, basic or a uh, pre-treatment system is capable at each location. Uh, well, they do it whenever they have resources available, but uh, they're, they're uh, trained soil scientists. They look for presence of groundwater, seasonal groundwater of, they're obviously work in this county. They're, they're here all the time, so they, they know what to look for. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for the, um, chief? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now go to the public testimony portion of this meeting. The rules of public testimony. I got four files now. I'm just going to read the rules one time. Uh, speak into the microphone up here. Loud and clear so that we can all understand you, so the people at home and our future selves can understand you. State your name. I don't need your address. I just need to, I don't even know how long you've lived here. I don't need to know what you do for, just state your name. Uh, the time limit is three minutes per testimony. Any public testimony may receive three extra minutes and no more from any other person who signed up to share public testimony for a total of no more than six minutes. Comments will be limited to the specifics of this file. If any testimony agrees with the previously shared public testimony, please show your respect for everyone's time and simply state that you agree with that testimony. Personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position are not allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing is not allowed. And and remember that this hearing is being shared live via the internet and is being recorded for public viewing later. Your children are children's children are children's children's children. Uh, the chair opens the hearing to public testimony. Before this hearing, commissioners were provided with a few written comments. I did see there was one late submission, which I was able to read before as well. Um, are there any other written statements to be added into the record this time? Steph?
No.
Okay. Uh, in that case, send it to you. We will start with, uh, those that have signed up to share public testimony. Start with three neutral comments. That is weird. All right, John O'Tara.
Welcome. It's weird and welcome. Thank you.
It's welcome. It is welcome. It's just uncommon.
Hi, my name is actually John O'Hara. I am a neighbor on the southwest corner of the property. Um, my main concerns are the septics, which I think will probably leach our direction towards the creek. Um, if one of their um, certified water folks came into my yard, they would see that those, those soils um, are difficult to drain properly. So I'm not sure how twenty-four single acre homes are going to handle, be handled on that soil that is essentially the same as mine across the creek. Uh, I think the conditions for fire are critical to putting that many homes in an area that is difficult to serve with the fire departments. I don't think ninety thousand gallons goes very far in a house fire. I, I would suspect that the house might be gone by the time they get there, depending on how they have to come. So I think that's a concern. And I know myself biking on Baldi, adding traffic to that road without any shoulders with the hill that um, comes off of the east side of the, uh, sorry, the west side of town, east side of the project would be um, difficult and I think will realistically cause issues. So I hope you consider those um, factors as you move to approve or deny the project. Um, and I think the your ability to do so is pretty well laid out in the staff report in terms of whether you agree with those conditions. Um, specifically, I would reference conclusions four, five, and six. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thanks, Josh.
My bank, uh, you're just yourself, or self, uh, west, you mentioned, are you on septic as well there?
Yes, I'm on septic, Serenka Water and Septic. We have um, seven and a half acres.
Okay.
And it's a single family, single level um, three bedroom home.
How old are your septic system?
Uh, probably uh, twenty-five years old.
Any problems with that at all?
No, I mean, we've had it, we've had it pumped and, but certainly the, the water level, the water table is much higher than it would be when the pits were dug in September, whenever it was.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Travis. Paul?
Thanks. My name is Travis Call. I'm the landowner to the west, that seventeen acres that butts up on the west side. Um, no different than John. Um, concerned about the drainage that you have there. They talk about the tracks. My understanding is that there's a sanitation restriction until that's appeased. I believe the comments that they put in there said it was approved. I don't believe that they are until that's removed. My concern is, is we have, we grow nursery stock trees there next to it. That's a lot of septic systems coming on to our property. There are pretty big drainages there. Not too sure if they're going to be able to design those appropriately. And my understanding is that you build your house and then they come and tell you if they're going to approve your septic or not, according to Panhandle Health. So that's my concern there. Second concern is on the fire. Acknowledge that they are going to be putting in the tank to hold in it. There was a fire that occurred on April sixth, and it took twenty-five minutes for the fire department to come to the fire. If you got your wire, fire, you got your water there, that's great. But in twenty-five minutes, that's a lot of damage that can be done. So I'm not too sure if Northside has the ability to really handle this project. Those are my two main comments.
So you're growing, you got like a nursery?
Yeah, or in the nursery stock.
Okay. Um, I think septic. No, I don't work for Panhandle Health District, but when I did a project, septic design was all approved, like way before we could break ground on the house. I don't know, I'll have to ask that.
I don't know if they're here to respond.
I don't see anybody. Uh, any other questions for Mitch Paul? All righty.
Thanks.
Catherine Colberg.
Hi. Um, I'm Catherine Colberg. I'm with Panhandle Health, so I can answer, I'm here to answer questions. I figured there would be some questions because I've had some um, community members calling me about this. I was not the one who did the fieldwork out there. Uh, my inspector Amanda Sarice did the work. But I've had multiple conversations with her about this. Um, and I've been around on the scene for a long time, so there is um, tight soils to um, clay soils. There's about a foot of loam out there, and then it converts into clay soils. So I don't know if you guys received the, let the comments, more updated comments I sent a week ago, but um, it was addressing that concern that we need to meet with the engineers and project planner for this because you can see all the natural drainages out there. Um, and then when you have clay soil, of course, it doesn't permeate very quickly. So surface water and um, surface water that's existing now, in addition to any surface water that will be created by stormwater features and swales and things like that. All have the same setbacks in Idaho. If it's there for two months or more, it's the full setback. If it's there for under two months at a time, then it's a temporary surface water. So we have various um, setbacks that were considered when Amanda was out there doing the test holes, but she did them in the fall. Um, our job is, we don't, it's a misconception to think that we need to be there in the spring to understand what's going on in the site because the soils tell the story very clearly. Um, so we see indicators within the soil profile that tell us there's definitely groundwater there. There's high groundwater. Um, she acknowledged that and saw that. You know, we sometimes monitor to get a little more fine tuned on details with that, but um, in general, most of these sites do need um, compli- complex alternative systems to address the groundwater concerns. Um, but they will be very large systems. And so part of our concern at this point in time is that we have to verify that each of these lots can actually fit a system sized for clay, which is why it's big. In addition to the alternative um, factors of each design and have a, both a primary and a replacement area for each lot that's proposed. And if there's any lots that are going to need their drain fields on an easement on a neighboring parcel, that has to be specifically identified before, on the face of the plat. So that we know that easement's in a good location and it's big enough. At this, at the time Amanda was out there, which we didn't know what the stormwater plan was going to be or where all these other water features might end up. So while the suit, the area is generally suitable for septic, um, we still need to fine tune the details of how this is going to be planned to actually fit structures. Um, septic systems, driveways, water lines, all that stuff. So um, I actually have a meeting with um, H M H tomorrow morning at my office about this. But I will say it's not definitively determined that the number of how everything could work out. Um, because it's extremely complicated when you have clay soils and small parcels and um, high groundwater and slopes and surface water, so.
I felt like I was about to learn about a hundred things and that, what you just said. So I'm gonna go back to one of the very things in the beginning. You said there's about a foot of loam. And then clay below that, is that I understand, it's just like a foot deep of loam? And I assume that's the kind of soil that like breeds well and can do its biogestive thing with bobs, and then clay is probably more like a bathtub?
Or we're, am I? Yes, so our basic categories for soils are sands, which are more porous, loams, which are a mix of sands and clays and silts. And then we get down into the clays, which are basically tight silts and clays. So when you get that fine clay, tight soil, it just, that's when you get the overland flow occurring and it is just, it's septic.
Flow, is that a fun way to say it goes this way, like?
Yeah, it just kind of, doesn't permeate in. So it, when the spring comes, the snowmelt lingers a little longer, things just take longer and you, and a lot of times on clay sites, it'll just start flowing towards the drainage over land and then it goes into that drainage area. And you need significantly larger septic systems because of that, because again, they just need to be bigger in order to, for that wastewater to eventually permeate.
Have the surface area volume ratio problem?
Yeah, basically.
Okay. Any questions for?
I had a question. One of the neutral comments that we heard uh, referenced the drain field approval happening after the, the, the whole plan has been submitted. It sounds to me like that process has happened so much uh, earlier than it.
Well, the planning department will have to speak to the building location permit process that's in place.
But as far as the train field.
Right, right now, they would not need to be, they would not need to obtain a septic permit prior to getting a BLP. That's the process right now, so.
Can they get a?
We review them, but, um.
Occupancy, can they get an occupancy permit without your signature? Is that what that's called?
I would, yeah, the planning department will have to speak to the, that part.
Jake, I know we've had this conversation a dozen times. I just want to be clear for the record.
Yeah, sure. So given the size of these lots, sanitary restrictions have to be lifted before we can issue the final plat. So that's thing number one on the subdivision side.
We can't even issue the plat without that, okay?
We can't go to final plat without that. Yeah, that, that's found in four eleven, four twelve. Four twelve. So I think it's one note nineteen, is that right? Bad one, I can pull these things out of my head. Uh, the second thing is on the building location permit side. Right now, Title XI requires, Title XI being the building regulations requires a ten day notification to Panhandle Health, to which they have an opportunity to provide comment prior to the issuance of a BLP, building location permit. So that gives someone the permission to start construction. Then on the backend, before we finalize the permit and issue a certificate of occupancy, like a completion certificate, um, they need a signature sign off that sanitary restrictions have been, have been like met from Panhandle.
So it's three different stages of that.
Really, it's two. It's like, part one is the, part one is the, is this the land division, part two is split into like two, two portions.
Okay.
Does that help?
Thank you, Director, very much so. Any other questions for Ms. Colberg? Okay, thanks for coming, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, does anyone who did not sign up care to share public testimony this time? One up to the microphone. Andrew Self. Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Marbles. Um, my name is Tom Miller. I live in the property just to the north and east, thirteen and a half acres. Our biggest concern is the amount of water that, surface water that runs across the property. And having septic systems there with surface water running through. What she said is absolutely true. The clay is just about a foot down. And so there is a massive amount of water that comes across our piece of property to the point where Panhandle Health has prescribed what we were to do to put in septic systems three times. All three of them failed after we put them in. I spent about sixty thousand dollars. And finally, I went to them and I said, you can either let me do it the way I want to do it, or you can buy my property. Because the last one we did, two weeks after we did it, a moose stepped through it, like got stuck in it. Um, there, the soil there, uh, and that was at the highest point on our property.
Really good joke in there somewhere.
I'm sure that, I'm sure there is, and there's probably a better story. It might have been another animal involved too.
Installed three septic drain fields?
Yes.
And they all failed?
They all failed.
Okay. Catherine's here to hear that, so that's good.
It's nothing personal, just, it's what happened. We put a whitewater system in, it has not had any problems at all outside of a pump going out and we upgraded that. But the whitewater system worked on our property. Everything they prescribed did not work, and if they're gonna do turtles or whatever systems, uh, there is a lot of water flowing through here. It's all coming off of uh, Micanic and Baldi Mountain, all of that, and it's, it's a massive amount of water. We have a barn there that we literally have pumps going for three months out of the year, maybe four months, just to keep it dry.
Oh, whitewater is a product that's made by infiltrator that makes another.
I was gonna ask that as well, maybe some clarification. Um, it sounds like you know a lot about.
I don't know a lot about it, but I know that it works. Um, we have a, we have a series of tanks. And then that is pumped about a hundred feet to an, to a drain field that we uh, put sand and soils in so that it would perk its way down and get its way down below the, uh, the clay that was there. And so we had to kind of redevelop and we wound up losing about a half acre to do that, to make it work. There was another point I was gonna make. Yeah, my, my concern is that digging and I, I know they understand soils, but digging in September, which is practically the driest month of the year, is not what it's like to dig in the springtime where there is literally water running across the top of our, our acreage. And it runs directly down and across that acreage.
Like west to east?
Yeah, it runs, uh, runs south and then it turns. You can kind of see the, where the trees kind of, kind of turn and you see a drainage there. We have actually built a pond to stop some of that at the back of our property. But, and that pond filled up about eight feet deep this year. That's how much water is running through there. Um, but there is a massive amount of water that's moving through there, and my concern would be if there's that much water going through there, how is it going to work with septic systems? Because I, I agree with Mr. Call that it's gonna go head right towards their piece of property because that's the way the water's moving. It's moving away from us, but it's moving towards other people. And we all, the, the land is very similar in all those properties around it.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Miller?
No, it sounds like two, two of the neighbors then can get back, but more water, one of the neighbors is gonna get, uh, really, really green trees, something. Potentially.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Might have been the most helpful public comment I've ever heard.
Yeah.
Like brought with information. All right.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Moving along, is anyone else present that would like to share public testimony that hasn't signed up? Anybody online with their hand raised? Okay. Uh, Commissioners, care to discuss this before we close the public testimony? Usually we don't, I suppose I asked. Uh, the Chair closes the hearing in public testimony and with the opportunity to follow up to our public testimony. Okay. And staff, did you care to follow up? Usually you don't. Okay.
I actually do.
You do? I was just about to take it out of my script. I was just like, wait.
Did you open for rebuttal?
Yeah.
So there was a Jake about planning director. Um, you'll notice there's an appendix C of your staff report. It's close to the bottom, should be the last three or four pages. I think I mentioned this to the zoning commission last month on this reasoned decision-making worksheet. So there was a, a new case law from the Supreme Court. I believe it was either out of Ada County or City of Boise. There was a, an interpretation made by a Supreme Court case law out of, that is now necessitating a, a change in how we make decisions as a county. So this comes out of Idaho Code sixty-seven, sixty-five, thirty-five, if I remember right, where it's a uh, any decision made under the provisions of the local land use planning act, which is where all of our authority comes from to make decisions on land use files. Has to be accompanied by a reasoned statement. You also have to deliberate on any contested facts um, as presented by any of the, um, any of the public during one, during the hearing, so if, um, what we've provided to you is, so with that, the reasoned statement analysis is that the zoning commission or the hearing body needs to deliberate on every standard that applies to that given, um, land division or a given file. In this case, we have a subdivision file. You have a staff report that has all of the detailed analysis in it. So you could go through line item by line item here, and what we have is essentially what you have in the staff report with a bunch of blank stuff. So you need to say, the evidence, you know, and the staff report is sufficient to, to meet the standard um, and deliberate on each line item. So if you notice the motion or the suggested motion in your, in your staff report, it also essentially adopts, um, or gives you the option to adopt the staff report and the evidence found within it. So questions on that new process? This is like a more refined deliberation, so rather than yeah, it's rather than just say, you know, we heard this, we heard that, what do you guys think? This is, the idea here is to say, hey, each one of these, let's talk about each one, so it's only
Three pages.
Two and a half pages, three page. Four pages longer, so, um, but like I said, the analysis, a lot of it is already found, or the vast majority is found already in the staff report. The only thing you would augment to this is any additional arguments you heard during public comments. Which, that's only if it's not already covered in the analysis or something that needs to be expanded on, given the additional information you heard during the hearing. Any other questions from you regarding that?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you also have a detailed analysis of the depth to width ratios, um, so you can just adopt that. Unless you have, uh, some correction to it, the staff is.
Yeah, let's do this thing, gentlemen.
Um, this applies to all four files tonight.
Thank you. All kinds of favors for me. Okay, twelve, two sixty-eight, application process, general provisions, agency routing required. Uh, I am satisfied that agency routing was, was handled properly. Uh, staff did a job showing us who responded, who didn't, and who responded incorrectly and had their hands slapped. Um, agents for ratings are pretty easy, if they did or they didn't, in my opinion. Okay, twelve, four twelve is next. Element standards. We're in suburban zone.
Okay, that was clear about, uh, water would have to have that bigger. That was clearly.
Minimum lot size required is one acre of the suburb district where our service is provided.
I'm wondering. You mentioned urban water service. Little, Seringo, recent, Seringo Pikes water.
Yeah.
They're, they're urban service.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
It's not on a well, and it's not a, an HOA, so that's why I would guess there is, that was not one of those type things.
Just trying to.
Okay, so I'd agree that twelve, four, twelve has been met. Twelve, six, ten, Bravo.
Yep. I think that's, that's an address.
Arseless lot creating forms of the provision this time, which are uniquely described on any recorded plat or other legal instrument that can be convinced as of the effective date here of shall teen, individual status, eligibility for sale, lease, finance, and give ability to ownership, as described.
Commissioners, may I interrupt you for a moment?
You, amay.
Thank you. Alex Fan, planning staff, um, so when you're going through this worksheet, it's not only, um, it's not enough to just say that it meets and we need to you need to explain how it meets, so either, um, if you agree with the staff report, you can say that you uh, agree with the analysis of the staff report, or if it doesn't meet, um, then you need to explain how it doesn't. Uh, so it's a clear decision for, uh, that to write to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Going back to the beginning, twelve, two sixty-eight, for the staff report. Great. Great.
Agreed.
Twelve, four, twelve, uh, also for the staff report.
Agreed.
Yeah, I heard. Okay. Twelve, six, it'll be on, make sure I intend this one, minimum lot size, or one acre. Twelve, six, ten, B.
I think staff was clear in that as well.
I don't understand how twelve, six, ten, B says anything about this. Parcels or lots creating performance of the provisions this time are unique to strike on any port plat or other legal instrument that can be advanced, and as of the effective date here of shall retain individual status and eligibility for sale, lease, finance, and give ability to ownership or other transfer of ownership as so is describing. Staff, what do you want me to do with that?
I don't know, lot size. Yeah, what's like, that's about the lot size movement to bet.
Oh. Which part of that code, am I possibly paying attention? Oh, it's just that it conforms to the title. It conforms to the provisions of the title.
It doesn't sound like it applies to, to mental lots outs.
Parcels and lots creating performance, which is this title. Shall retain visual status and eligibility. Okay.
The staff report notes on this one, it's talking about septic systems and sanitary instructions.
Okay. Lots and separation proposed to serve by individual substance. Okay. I see, twelve, six, ten, B says that it needs to be four minutes, the way that it is in, as described. Yes, the way that is provided by staff, the staff. Okay, twelve, six, twenty.
So we're good on six, ten, B?
I'm good on six, ten, B. General, any easement, specific constraints on building placement, other than the evenings and lands that carries reserved, be shown in fully marked plots. Uh, there were some exceptions, I think there were.
The top line, so the lines need to be added, but that's already been noted, as noted. The fire suppression plan, tanks, noting, a lot, ten, I believe.
And then there's some kitchen, conditions are observable. Is there land areas for also noted? Now, the H twelve, staff report. Those apply application due to, by staff, by standby license. And then it mentions C, conditions of approval, so I've jumped down into conditions of approval. She says that about twenty times here.
Use of strength, so, shall be shown by my mind on the class.
Yeah. I'd give six, twelve, six, twenty for the staff report. I agree with the staff word. Twelve, six, twenty-one, lot design.
Want to go through that table?
Yeah, there is a six, a whole of all of this. Or, I can lie up from the table.
Right there in the code, two and six.
Uh, they, if we want to, very last page. Like everything beats the three, six, one.
Submerged lands, so the code in six, twenty-one C says submerged lands are not being included when determining the depth with calculation. Right. That was called out, uh, during the presentation set.
And according to that table, all the lots are, I had, let's guess as and the, you know, the depth of width.
Okay, six, twenty-one per staff report.
Agreed.
Okay, six, twenty-two submerged lands. Not to be counted toward density calculations. Right down to the next. Lands below the applicable natural or ordinary watermark or the applicable high, artificial high watermark, I think, lake, river, stream, channel, or the body of public water shop, counted in the calculation returning maximum density per subdivision. Just examples. Yeah, so it's the usable acreage. And, yeah, we saw that those, that those lots, they propose lots to the south and the top where there is. Some standing waters have been made a lot larger than the rest. Yeah, six, twenty-two for the staff report.
Very great.
Six, twenty-three, A, and then B, okay. Six, twenty-three, A, B, C, and D. Anywhere lots are smaller than one acre. Why is A sided, A doesn't?
And staff is very clear on that. Lots are. Little staff, and yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, six, twenty-three is satisfied.
Focus to be in the subject system. That is per staff report as well, that was also known as by the app.
Yeah, six, twenty-three. He was definitely satisfied in staff. See sewage disposal. Sewage disposal method for all buildings, says approved by the Van Halen, the treatment and or state of I hope, may be provided. Or may not. Alright, so, so. Sewage disposal is one thing that we need to get, we need to get to, need to drill down into.
So there's a Jacob El again, I may. There's a, two different code sections that you kind of caught it, that slightly conflict with each other, chapter four requires the sanitary restrictions to be lifted. Where chapter six says it may. Right, so one's permissive, one's a requirement, that'll be changed in the code update when we update chapter six here in the very near future. Um, just know it's, it is required per chapter four, given the law size.
And we should look that, look for that in the conditions approval, I'm not going to re- review that now, I just really note to myself because we need to go through the condition separately. Six, twenty-three, D, fire plan, fire risk assessment.
I think that's definitely covered. Yeah, I did a good job with those slides on.
Yeah, I, I understand and acknowledge the concern that it takes twenty-five minutes for. Our apartment to arrive with fire truck. And then you've got like a cute little tank to our, probably has frogs living in it, as discussed in the previous meeting. Um, however, common posture effect, this, that's outside of our scope and we defer. To subject matter experts in that, just like we do with septic, and satisfy that staff, the advocates support with. Fire district, uh, and and that any written and writing on the class, so I'm satisfied that we're staffed for. Six, twenty-four, six, twenty-three, D is satisfied. Six, twenty-four, A, unique road names for new roads, yes, that road name has been reserved. There's nothing to say about that, other than yes, definitely covered. Six, twenty-four, B, road standard, sorry, does anybody disagree with that? Six, twenty-four, B, road standards to be met. I have road standards, well, appendix A. Uh, there are no private roads within subdivision, yeah. Yeah. Pass it on to the next generation. Twelve, six, twenty-four, C, legal access, legal access to each proposed lot, all lots are supposed to have direct financial access on roads, supposed to be dedicated public. Project complies, yeah, staff did a good job showing and the dev and the app could be a good job showing that. We just said, this is publicly, this is a public road privately maintained, privately maintained, so it does have. Each block will have public legal access, legal access. Six, twenty-four, D, public road frontage for lots less than five acres, direct punish, direct access to public road park, okay, same. On to six, twenty-five, trails and parks, staff said this was not applicable and approved, county trails plan does not exist. Right, yeah. On to six, twenty-six. And A, subdivision should be designed around identified natural hazards. This proposal needs more than that.
Yeah, we noted, yes, well, staff goes super areas, like the.
Have the either, you remember for the full plan or get a permit to.
So we're going to look for that one in the, um, conditions later.
Six, twenty-six, that has been satisfied.
Yes, I agree. And so this was all the discussion about shoreline setbacks. Which means the staff is following county code here and forcing this, I'm satisfied that it's in the code. And so probably doesn't need a condition, although I wouldn't be surprised if we found one. Doesn't need a condition, if there isn't, that's fine too. Oh, yeah. Right, right, talking about that. Okay, so for the staff report, six, twenty-six, B. Uh, six, forty-two, A, application content, application one. Staff said the application is deemed completely by staff, by the stamp by license item surveyor. Yeah, it's not stamped yet, but it will be, might be. And must be. I'm satisfied accepted that. Well, six, forty-two, B, application content preliminary plat prepared by Idaho licensed surveyor, showing parcels we created. And six, forty-two, B, one, plat content, okay. All of these six, forty-twos. Okay, I'm going to go quiet for a minute and just review all this myself. So all the six, forty-two stuff. Yeah, I think they nailed it here. It's already called out, the six, for six, four, two, B, two. Not only showing parcels are shown to respect the places on the ownership plats, there's a condition for that. Six, forty-two, B, five, no land contours are going to be shown, so that's been addressed and added to conditions. And then there's our, our, uh, six, forty-two, B, six. Flood zone concern.
Was the lower, yes, that was, as well.
Yeah. Oh, I would agree that's meant. Wrote and raised, called out in six, forty-two. With regard to six, forty-two. By a stamp signed by an, I have license engineer. Accepted a complete job on six, forty-two, all the six, forty-two items. Alright, on to six, forty-three. Yeah, this application has so many emails attached to it. Like making sure that it's in conformance in a hundred different ways. Application is definitely filed properly, we're doing public hearing now, best we can. Preliminary plot has been addressed. And conditions have been added. So, for the staff. For the work, six, forty-three is satisfying in my view. Six, forty-four. Okay, right. Condition for six, forty-four. Things that have to be met, but we're the final plat, like Van Halen Health District stuff. They did.
Are registered. And provide their coffees.
I don't, I didn't see anybody brought their badges, actually. Easy a batting gun.
I'm satisfied that six, forty-four.
Six, forty-five, standard for review, those standards in the home are over. Six, four, six, final plaque, and six, forty-six, yes, that's final plaque. Got all kinds of checks and balances in place for the final plaque. Six, forty-seven, endorsements on the final plaque.
My director mentions P C, it's a very good as well.
Once again, I promised to not stop sending, sending Christmas cards to anybody that doesn't satisfy their friends at the final plan. Yes, that has been covered, yes. Twelve, seven dot one, oh, go back to call seven. So it sounds like they had, um, the wetland delineated even better than we rely on the silly fifty-year-old maps. That's to be added to the plat, we all agree on that. Yeah, plenty vegetation is just in the code. Yeah.
Assess that, like, staff a great job on that.
How many, uh, engineers been involved? Having to sign up on the final plat anyways. Wetland, yes, the wetlands have been delineated, twelve, seven, three. Twelve, seven. Have no identified presence of critical wildlife habitats on site, that is group. That was checked for, agencies were notified. Also, the six hills, hillsides. Proposal is being designed around existing natural hazards, yes. Okay, I'm satisfied the staff did a good job addressing requirements of twelve seven, anyone have concerns there? Final detail, which is titled fourteen. Blood damage prevention. Yes, after long. Issues for approval. So I'm going to go jump over to, redo conditions of real nature, should we do? Finding the fact, probably should find the fact, yeah. Alright. So I'm looking at twenty, page twenty-seven. Twenty, page twenty-seven is where we have our most conclusions. Conclusion one would be proposed subdivisions in four, that includes twelve. Which two, the site is physically suitable, opposed well sent. Which three, that oppose will not personally impact our kinds of natural resources that apply to the competence plan. Yeah. So much of this we just covered.
That's the idea, right, so what you guys just went through, if you notice the staff report doesn't have any proposed findings of fact. What you're, what you've done is crafted findings of fact based on the standards that apply to the project. So what you have in front of you now is the conclusions of law, which are the distilled versions of the finding of fact, right, they're supported by the findings, so. Everything you read in, the analysis that you kind of just reviewed and added to the record. Um, will be added into your decision letter or your recommendation letter to the board, um, that supports your recommendation. I was just going to state that you won't find any findings of fact anymore, because they're essentially.
You fool of me. You're reading conclusions, it's just their findings.
So you could discuss those conclusions and then in the motion, you can say, and the conclusions as discussed, and you don't have to read them in the record again.
So. The big thing that I wanted to discuss to the whole rate is the. Settling situation. Now. The county defers to Department of Environmental Quality. Slash Panhandle Health District, which is the local agency for Department of Environmental Quality for these issues. And a lot of times, these departments and these agencies don't have great communication or great rapport. What we have tonight is very serendipitously, uh, Catherine Fullberg came. And heard everything that was going on, and it's, and clarified a few things, and Von Miller. The neighbor to the east came and described the incredible pain he's been through, I never heard of three septic fields in one spot before. And so, and we know that this is not a done deal, that the H M H Engineering, an engineering firm. Not a couple banjo players and spoons, but. A real engineering firm are working with the real panel health district on this problem, and. That nothing's actually stone yet, so I'm satisfied that the right people, the right subject matter experts, the right licenses, right. Had to agree, they're doing the right thing regarding subject systems. As much as I can. With, yeah. Without me like going around interviewing people tomorrow, like we've given, they've given a lot of information here to say, and I'll still doing their job. We aren't approving all of this unconditionally, we're approving it. Subdivisions, we're approving it for the. Oh, that was one of the things that, there was a public comment, Mr. Director. There was a rich comment about this being a final decision, and I wanted to make sure that she addressed that in the public.
So per chapter six, which is our subdivision code. As of right now, this body can only make recommendations to the board account commissioners on preliminary plats. So what you're making tonight is not a final decision, and even when it goes to the board, it's not a final decision, it's a decision of the preliminary plat. So what they're, what, what, what they've requested is they've given some amount of details, you have like a proposed plat. You know, some amount of detail as far as a stormwater plan and a road plan. Um, they haven't spent the time or effort to crafting the full version of all of those. Because, you know, they don't want to put too much of the cart in front of the horse, so once they have a preliminary approval, they would then spend a lot more time and effort crafting up. The more in-depth plans that get reviewed and approved. The more in-depth plans that get reviewed and approved by, you know, both outside and inside the county officials that, uh. Re- reviewed these types of items, right? So take a stormwater plan as another good example. That was a kind of a contested fact. Um, so the stormwater, water plan is added as a condition of approval per B C R C. Um, twelve dash seven point two. Um, they have a preliminary plan that's been reviewed preliminarily by, uh, the county engineering department. They have some notes on that. They need to be addressed. They haven't done a full in-depth, um, revision of that until they get a, a final, or until they get an approval of the preliminary plat. Um, typically it takes, uh, and either they'll have to construct the road and the water improvements and the fire improvements. Before a final plat, or they get a bond for all of those same, same items. The pond is for a hundred and fifty percent of the improvement value. So. Their engineer will put together a, a cost list that gets scrutinized by our engineers and they usually argue back and forth for a few emails. And then they come up with, yes, this seems to be the reasonable cost. You take that, multiply it by one point five, that's the bond amount. Can be either in cash or in like a, a certified bond through a company, and that's all covered in chapter six. Um, and then a final plat can be submitted. So.
Okay.
Does that help answer kind of the, the process?
Does, yeah, the, 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 the public comment that I'm addressing was written one that was sent in by. Uh, Reg Propper to set him where that zoning commission is just to consider final. And that zoning commission decisions need to be appealed to the bar, to the B O C C. And what you just explained is that these decisions are not final.
Right.
In fact, when it goes to B O C C, that's also not final, it's a preliminary approval and then final plat is when people actually sign the plat.
And that gets submitted like on a Tuesday business meeting, once everything's been met or bonded for. And then the board has one more chance to review that document. It gets submitted as a, an agenda item, it gets discussed. If it's not on the consent agenda, they review it and then, um, if they agree that everything's been met, then they direct this picture and sign.
And for the transparency, there are certain decisions, there are certain files, this body does see that our, our decisions are considered final.
Yeah.
They still be appealed.
Sure.
Uh, but this is not one subdivision.
Correct. As of right now, subdivisions are only recommendations, and that's a provision in chapter six. And I, 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 it might have been Miss Crawford, or it might have been somebody else that I had emailed back and forth and explained this process to a little bit more. Cause if there was some miscommunication or just some misunderstanding as to how the code reads and why. Um, and I think I explained this to the, the zoning commissioner a couple of months ago, that. There's a kind of a conflict in our own code of who has the authority to make decisions on preliminary plans. So. Until we fix that, which I, I have a solution crafted, um, it'll be in hearing in the next few months. Um, all the subdivision files are gonna come to the. That's why you have two hundred plate tonight.
We use schoolhouse rock or.
I'll get working on that.
Good.
I think, so you had a few contested facts, right? You had a fire standard, you had the, the, um, sub-service sewage. Um, and then you had the stormwater. What was the fourth one? Alex. Was alright, what was the four contested facts? The stormwater, fire. Sewage and. I thought, I thought there was a fourth, and maybe it was just those three. I think you expanded on the, the fire standard and we had some deliberation about that. Um, and you just discussed the, the second topic of the sewage disposal. Um, if you feel that the. The conditional approval and the explanation by Panhandle Health is sufficient enough, um, and that covers your deliberation. I think you could deliberate a little bit more on the. Um, grading stormwater erosion control.
Yeah, I think on that topic, it's mostly just topics. I think. We need to be, uh, cognizant of protecting those downstream neighbors. Based on our recommendation, right? And there's a lot of, there's a lot of testimony. Of Mr. Miller and, and the other neighbors on, on that. And then also protecting, you know, preventing unnecessary. Cost of looking at future trouble by new potential buyers and homeowners building on those lots.
Public externalities.
Right.
There is a stormwater plan submitted.
And then condition of approval sixteen is the one that references back to that, that, um, standard. You wanna review that one? Uh, it's on page thirty-two of fifty-one. If you notice, all these conditions of approval, they're not an A condition or a B condition, as you see with C U Ps or variances. These are all conditions of approval prior to final plat. So everything on this list has to be prior to final plat. Yeah. That's why that's only listed in American Europe.
Take a minute for sunrise, Commissioner.
I think sixteen's adequate for addressing not, not an expert in stormwater management. Looks like there's a lot of engineers at, at Connor County have some couple of two items.
Very actively involved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with all that, all that.
I agree.
I think the intent of our recommendations may convey a lot of celebration here also.
Sure.
Serious to care about it.
Patrick, can you enlighten us as to? What happens to this? Liminary flat, it's grew by its body and then are recommended for its body and then. Terms out that panelizes, they're actually only have sixteen houses on this killing group for sixteen subjects and. What's the process then with the planner? I've all been looking at them through speed or lots on it.
Right.
Back to your, you already noticed.
So the modification code found in chapter two allows for modifications of preliminary plots as well as final plans. So I think in that case, if depending on what the modification is, right, typically we would require some kind of new hearing to approve that modification.
So I just reviewed the conditions of. I think it would really be. All of those would be all we really addressed, talked about delivery and all of these issues to this point. In my opinion nineteen, did we want to, Mr. How do you feel about striking nineteen as proposed?
I agree. Right, thank you.
I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, so.
Conclusion five is one that I have a turn about because of deceptive situation, but again, we address that as best we can here. So it's, it's my view that we can consider this. File to not, the proposed will not cause circumstances to exist, the cause be sure isn't hope for large, be exposed to hazards as your health, hazards to help or safety.
It was all passing the word that we're here from, putting our hope into the whole right, so their bodies that are next to the neck. But yes. The way that that recognition.
I have to add to this liberation, so. Any commissioner care to make a motion to prove deny or continue this file? Okay. I don't need my re-earson. I'll go. I recommend approval of this project for the commissioners file S zero 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 one twenty-five deer field subdivision required requesting creation twenty-four residential lots and ones of one tractor approximately. Thirty-two point six seven acre property zone suburban and located in section sixteen township fifty-seven north range two west poison rating water county. Our county Idaho finding that it is part of the finer county revised code as enumerated in the following conclusions block. The post subdivision is in accord with the purposes of title twelve and subdivisions zoning district. Conclusion two, the site is physically suitable for the proposed sub, for the, for the proposed development. Conclusion three. Design of the proposed subdivision will not adversely impact upon counties natural resources as defined in our plan. Any adverse impacts or potential for impact should be mitigated as additional approval. Nick conclusion four, the public service services included been out limited to water sewer shit sewer services solid waste fire protection emergency services and school facilities and transportation which will serve the post subdivision are adequate for the needs of the future residents or users. Conclusion five, the proposed subdivision will not cause circumstances to exist, will cause future residents or public at large to be exposed to as we should help or safety. Question six. The design of the proposed subdivision or related improvements will provide for coordinated access with the county system of roads and with adjacent properties and will not impede the use of public easements or access to or through the proposed subdivision. The post transportation system is designed to adequately and safely serve future residents. Or users without adversity impacting the existing transportation, transportation system by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazards for congestion. Conclusion seven, the posted division is designed to comply with the science criteria or subdivision set forth in subchapter six point two. Of this chapter which references title twelve. Inclusion eight, the proposed subdivision is not in conflict with the policies of honor counting comprehensive plan. The recommendations based on evidence submitted up to time staff reports prepared and testimony received this hearing. Further removed to adopt the recent statement as discussed in deliberation in this hearing in the analysis is set forth in separate or, or is amended during this hearing. Specifically dropping. Condition nineteen. And direct planning staff to draft the reasons statements to reflect this motion is set forth in Idaho code section sixty-seven dash six five three five. Have the chair sign and transmit to all interested parties. This section does not result in taking private property. You got a motion second, any commissioner care to discuss the motion and or its second? All right, can we show a vote from my left, please?
Mr. Blazer.
Mr. Marvel eye.
Mr. Wilson eye.
All right, the motion carries with four voting in favor and. All right. It's been almost two hours. Almost two hours. We will take a three recess before we go to our next file. Yes, the time is seventeen, seven seventeen. Here calls for a thirteen minute recess will resume at seven thirty.
Yes. Yeah.
That's a solid target. The time is seven thirty-one. Let's introduce the next file. File number two. S three dash twenty-four along planet saw bucks, saw buck estates second edition. The applicant is requesting to subdivide and plot two parcels totaling approximately forty-five acres into nine residential lots. Or approximately five acres each. The property is on rural five. Project is located off saw buck road. In section ten township fifty-four north range four west boys ingredient for modern county Idaho. Can you commissioner have? Conflict of interest or expert communication to disclose regarding this file at this time?
No.
No. All right, staff, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we are here today to discuss file S zero 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 three dash two four. Sawback estate second edition. Applicant in this case is requesting to subdivide and plot two parcels totaling approximately forty-five acres into nine residential lots of approximately five acres each. Property is zone for all five. Those subdivision is adjacent to the divided minor land divisions of Sabbath states, Sabbath estates first edition Sabbath forest. And is on Sabbath road off of Kelsa lake road, section sixty-one township fifty-nine north range two west Boise Meridian Bonner town. So on the screen there is an image of the site in blue along with the dates that the required noticing was accomplished on this file. So the site comprises two parcels, possibly forty-five acres of land. Uh, the site is zone for all five. We'll talk a little bit more about that zoning later. There's a little caveat to that. Site has frontage on is access via Sabbath road which private road and access off of Kelsa lake road. Where the African Sabbath road was reconstructed in summer two thousand twenty-one to have a twenty-two foot wide travel wet, travel way with fresh base rock and surfacing. And there is a sixty foot wide ingress egress and utilities fee used meant provided for by the instruments that you see on the screen according to the application. Um, individual septic and well are planned for each lot. The application states that the site is served by Northern Lights as well as Spirit Lake Fire District. Solid waste managed at the county transfer station or by private contractor and uh, site is served by West Bonner School District number eighty-three. So this site is mostly flat, majority of the site contains no slopes or slopes of less than fifteen percent gray. There is uh, one area we'll get to later that uh, has slopes over thirty percent towards the east of the site. No real water on this site, at least not that is mapped. Uh, site did not contain wetlands, water bodies, streams, lakes, rivers. The soils are gravelly, actually so low classified as prime farmland, no map floodplain on the site. Uh, no locals or state agencies have identified any critical wildlife habitats on or within the vicinity of the subject property. Uh, the site is uh, zoned as rural five currently vacant. And it is surrounded by rural five forest forty and agricultural forestry twenty zoning. Um, all sites are either vacant or put to residential use currently around. The two parcels. Uh, zoning is rural five land use designation is rural residential. Uh, this is the wetland map. There's nothing in the blue area there. Slopes, you can see the steep slopes concentrated over to the extreme eastern portion of the property there in red. Uh, soils are pretty uniform throughout the site on our gravelly, actually so low class is prime farmland. Uh, the zoning on the site needs a little bit of discussion. Um, you might notice there's that clear open area that looks like no zoning at all. You can just see the trees there. That's uh, that clear symbology. It is actually symbolized. It's forced forty zoning. There is a length of about a hundred and twenty feet of ground. That's uh, south of the line of the parcel, technically making this a split zone property. Um, that hundred and twenty feet is too big for staff to make a call on. So the applicants had to go before the B O C C, the board of county commissioners and the board county commissioners consistent with B R C, B C R C. Twelve dash three one five made a determination that the entire site in question should be viewed as rural five. Um, that memo is on the screen there in front of you assigned and dated. It's pretty obvious to look at it that it's a mapping error, I think. But our code doesn't allow us to make those kind of judgment calls the board has to make. So the whole site is for all five for purposes of this hearing. Um, here is the image of the subdivision lots one through nine. Uh, subdivisions normally have to be greater than ten lots, um, but the planning director determined this was a full subdivision. Due to the minor land divisions that have been done previously uh, around the site. Ultimately, this is this, this uh, exceeded a ten lot development. So the following agencies commented on the date you see on the screen as of the date of staff report publication. I didn't see any public comments come in on this as of the date of staff report publication. If any came in late, they should have been forwarded by uh, admin staff. The uh, standards that apply to this request are pretty similar to what we saw in the last file minus most of the things about water. So we'll go ahead and go through uh, the same sort of table that we saw in the previous hearing. The application was routed to public agencies properly. Um, there is a density standard of uh, five acres per lot in the rural five zone. And the lots in this case are proposed to be five acres or greater. And as we saw, B O C C did determine that this whole area is rural five, the whole two parcels in question. Subdivision to be served by individual septic and individual well. Uh, because of that per V C R C twelve dash four one two, um, there needs to be a sanitary restriction on face the flat in this case, a little bit different from the last subdivision. Uh, that also does need to include a space for the signature of an appropriate representative and handle health. And of course, the site is served by Northern Light Spirit Lake Fire West Bonner School District number eighty-three, Bonner County Ambulance District, Monterey Hospital District. Um, it should be noted that staff doesn't have and has never had and probably never will have an independent tool to verify exactly the service area of any electrical utility. It's their data. We can't require them to give it to us. It'd be cool if I had a layer that I could click on, but we do rely on the applicant to tell us who serves the site and we. And we really don't have a way of necessarily verifying that through independent data that we have in the department. So as far as easements constraints or reserved land areas, the application was deemed complete and the plat is stamped by licensed Idaho land surveyor. All the proposed lots are the appropriate depth width ratio as shown the appendices that are attached. Uh, no submerged lands on the, on the parcels, of course. Individual septic and well as previously stated. There is a fire protection plan that has been uh, submitted. You'll see a familiar condition of approval similar to the last plat. Uh, when we get down to that portion of the uh, presentation dealing with the fire protection. Uh, the unique road names for new roads doesn't really apply. Um, there is a condition of approval just in case there, but we're extending an existing road. Uh, so no new names need to get reserved. Road has to be designed to meet the private road standards of B C R C title twelve appendix A. Um, and the required improvement plan and final road plan, of course, will be required by a condition of approval. To be approved by that Bonner County Road and Bridge prior to final plat. As designed right now, all lots are supposed to have direct frontage and access via Sawbuck Road. So we have legal access. Uh, public road frontage is not required. It is allowed to have a private road because of the lot size that's proposed. Of course, trails and parks don't apply because we don't have an approved county trails plan. The site is mostly flat. Uh, majority of the site contains no slopes over thirty percent grade. Any development on any slopes over thirty percent grade um, will require a geotechnical report. Honestly, they would require, there is a condition of approval, but regardless, it would be required even without a condition of approval because it's in code. And we don't have to restate code to make it apply. Project has been reviewed to meet the requirements of B C R C title twelve, chapter seven, the environmental standards. Uh, the application form was deemed complete and plat is stamped by an Idaho licensed land surveyor. The application content looks like it complies with code uh, was deemed complete. Plat is stamped by a surveyor. Uh, we do have the subdivision name, rid norther arrow vicinity map vicinity road pattern presented. Does look like not all adjoining landowners are shown on the plat. Staff does have access to this information through independent sources, but it's still over code requirement. And so there's a condition of approval. That that should be submitted prior to scheduling for final plat. So as far as the uh, content of a plat goes. Again, it was deemed complete and the plat is stamped by an Idaho licensed land surveyor. Uh, this one does appear to show contours on the plat. Site is not located within designated floodway. It is within flood zone X. Flood zone X is not a floodplain. Um, one hundred percent of the United States is in some type of floodplain just for insurance actually. For real purposes, if you're not in a floodplain, they have no way to write you. They can't give you an insurance policy. So everybody's in some kind of floodplain, but it's not a special flood hazard area and is subject to no special floodplain regulation at all. Existing wells, spring, wetland boundaries, et cetera. Um, plat is stamped by an Idaho licensed land surveyor. Uh, application was to use complete. Uh, as previously stated, the individual septic and well are planned. Um, I will restate every service who've heard that four or five times. The plat content looks like it meets the six four two standards. Uh, application was deemed complete. That is stamped by a surveyor. There are no lots proposed to be reserved for any public use or common use in this case, so. Twelve six four two D ten doesn't really apply. Uh, the proposed use is stated on the face of plat. The proposed use is residential. Road design and profile. We do have a preliminary road design that has been submitted and reviewed by road and bridge. Uh, there is a condition of approval that this has to be finally approved by road and bridge prior to final plat. Uh, the application was filed and deemed complete and we are holding public hearings on this matter. In plat was stamped by a surveyor, application was deemed to complete. Uh, there are some requirements with the improvement plan. This is uh, the improvement plan is a final plat, not a preliminary plat requirement. There is a condition that be submitted. Then we have another couple of final plat requirements that apply, but not yet at this stage of the project. Uh, the applicant did submit a stormwater erosion control plan. It has been preliminary reviewed and there's a condition of approval that this must be approved prior to final plat. No state, local or federal agency identify the presence of any critical wildlife habitats on the site. The site is mostly flat. Um, any site with grade over thirty percent will have a geotechnical survey requirement. Uh, there's a condition of approval requiring that. Even if there wasn't, it doesn't exempt them from the code itself, which requires that regardless. And as far as title fourteen goes, the flood damage prevention ordinance, uh, as I mentioned, it's not in a floodplain, so uh, it doesn't apply. The proposal was reviewed and this review is in the staff report uh, against the policies of the implementation component of the cop plan. And it appears that this does not conflict with any of those policies this proposal. Again, a lot of standard boilerplate conditions uh, with standard wording on here, not too many unique ones. Uh, condition one requires a sanitary restriction. To be enforced on the subdivision along with a space for Panhandle Health signature on that sanitary restriction. Uh, any easements and constraints on building placements uh, have to be shown and plainly marked on the plat. That would be the responsibility of the surveyor. There's the final plat. Condition three is just the same as before, um, talking about the fire protection plan that's ultimately going to be required and giving the options for how. The applicant would like to meet that by different options. Condition four, uh, any new roads need a unique road name. As it stands right now, no new roads are being created. Uh, in private road is planned, so that private road per condition five has to meet private road standards of B C R C title twelve appendix A. Um, and this plan shall be approved by Bonner County Road and Bridge prior to final plat. Preliminary plat has to show all parcels of land intended for public use or uh. Use of all property owners or communal lots. This is a standard uh, condition doesn't really apply here because none of those lots are being proposed. Uh, does look like some adjoining landowners may have been left off the plat. Uh, regardless of whether or not staff can access this information, uh, they still need to provide that. And so there's a condition that that be provided prior to final plat. Condition eight is your standard two year expiration date on the plat. Condition nine is that uh. Regarding uh, submitting the improvement plan stamped by an engineer and what that must include. Condition ten is around the improvement plan and when the subdivider may begin construction. And uh. Those improvements do have to be signed off and approved of. In an inspection by road and bridge. Condition eleven is the standard bonding condition that goes onto every plat uh, consistent with the bonding code. It's twelve six four four C. Condition twelve just covers the standard final plat conditions. Um, in six four six, six four seven and six four eight of title twelve. Condition thirteen. Regarding. That the applicant did submit their stormwater plan, but that that stormwater plan has to be modified and ultimately approved as required by Bonner County Road and Bridge prior to final plat. Uh, condition fourteen, standard requirement for anything with steep slopes. Uh, if you want to build on a steep slope, you're going to need a geotechnical analysis. Uh, this is required per code for honestly, regardless of whether or not we state it, but we stated in here just, just to uh, make sure everyone is aware of it. Uh, that concludes my presentation on this. Uh. Plat is up there on the screen. Were there any questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
You need to consider.
Good evening commissioners. Um, first let me just say thank you for your public service. Um, I know. The pay is paltry and hours are long and um, really appreciate the service that you. Give to our county and our community. My name is Jeremy Grimm. Um, I am uh. Speaking from the perspective of whiskey rock planning and consulting, I'm representing the applicant McGee one LLC for the Sawbuck Estate Second Edition.
Just one real quick. You're not, you're not representing the city of Sandpoint.
I am not. I am not representing the city of Sandpoint. Uh, there's probably a better disclaimer I could put out there, but uh, I'll work on that. So this proposal is for a low density rural subdivision, nine lots on forty five acres in the Hoodoo Valley. Each lot exceeds the five. Meets or exceeds the five acre minimum of the R five zone is thoughtfully designed to fit within the character of the surrounding area. Which is already uh, developed with the Sawbuck Estates First Edition and Sawbuck's Forest Minor Subdivision. Lots are served by Sawbuck Road, a private road improved to current standards with twenty two feet of travel way and a fresh surfacing two thousand twenty one. Legal access is well documented with a, with a recorded sixty foot easement. The flat topography, prime well yields and well drained soils make this land ideal for responsible development. From a planning perspective, the project advocate uh, advances multiple goals of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. It provides much needed housing. In response to population growth while preserving rural character. It avoids sensitive environmental features and places no new burden on public infrastructure. All lots are intended to be served by individual well and septic systems consistent with the rural land use pattern. Um, there's a few elements here. Um. Uh, your staff has found the application complete and compliant with all applicable uh, Bonner County devised code provisions. Uh, no agency or public opposition has received to date. Um, the key findings are that uh, the plat conforms to. Bonner County rise code title twelve in terms of lot size, road access, utility and environmental standards. Access is a private road, Sawbuck Road uh, with legal easements recorded. Utilities, individual well septic powered by Northern Lights and it's located in Spirit Lake Fire District. From an environmental perspective, there are no wetlands, floodplains, watercourses or critical habitat. The majority of the land is flat with minimal slopes. Stormwater erosion control plans have been submitted and reviewed by Bonner County Road and Bridge. No agency or public objections, as I mentioned. And comprehensive plan fits and it's been found to be consistent with all applicable plan elements, property rights, population, land use, economic development, natural resources, et cetera. Uh, we are aware of the conditions and we confirm those uh, for final planning. So with that, um. I respectfully request that you recommend approval of this application. With that, it stand for any questions you may have.
Questions for representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair opens hearing. Public testimony. For this hearing, commissioners were provided with no written comments regarding this file. Uh, are there any other written statements to be entered into the record at this time? No, okay. No. Okay. Uh, does anyone present character public testimony at this time?
I have one person left on my.
No neutral testimony on this one. Number terrorize. The chair was the hearing public testimony. Before going to rebuttals. Commissioners will not deliberate files commissioners. Little town clever deliberate file. We have two more of these. Uh, commissioner deliberate. We take a little different approach to this one. Yeah. Jumping down to page eight of forty three. Looking at the standards review as. An analysis those provided by staff. They did a fantastic job. Uh, files well, well composed. I think what we ought to do is, is look through for. Excepting your areas where we thought the standard review or the center's analysis could have been better. Areas that we have any questions on. We'll take a little. Moment of silence to read through that carefully and see if we got any concerns.
Down with that uh, twelve dash seven dot two. Small morning man with ratings, don't want to manage. I noticed. And I read through the memo from. County act to. Well, or you know about the. Man planet. There's. Quite a few items they don't need to address. And it does appear that staff have put that in the condition. So that was. Adequate to me to, to that. That was one. Main thing I saw in this. Their plan was. Need quite a few changes.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
You may, Mr. Eric.
It looks like we did receive one public comment. It was received late and today. So it per chapter two, it's up to the chair. If you want to enter that into the record, I don't know if it was supplied to the applicant's representative. No. So if you were to admit that to the, to the record, I'd want to get a copy over to Mr. Grimm, let him have a chance to review it and then respond to that. So uh, or the code says you don't have to accept those. You can just state, you know, it was received late. We're not going to consider that in our decision. So.
Uh, I think we'll, we'll not consider that one tonight.
Thank you.
I think that staff's analysis very thorough.
Yeah.
And um, jumping down to the conditions. Conditions are. As usual, they're half boilerplate. Actually, these are. Almost all boilerplate. This is a really boring, common application here for very basic bunch of vibes. Very basic.
If we're using the land itself. Sticks out.
It's very well. Five acre it means it's easy to just say. Well, subject on each other. Not complicated.
Right.
So I, I'm sure that's made easier on. On representative and on. Staff as well.
And one other thing that was note was that discrepancy. Look like a mapping.
Discrepancy.
Yeah.
Right. It's nice that the exceptions been handled by the board.
And the, and the sign memo was in the south. Or wrapped in the case.
It seems like that's been handled very well.
Yeah, it was a year ago, I think that.
Yeah, it's almost signature.
Yeah. So I would accept, just speaking for myself, I would accept staff's analysis of the findings in fact. That means uh. Who else is?
I agree for that as well.
Yeah, yeah. And I've reviewed the conditions verbal as well. I, I agree commissioner. Yeah, yeah, and I've reviewed the conditions verbal as well, and I I agree commissioner, as the additions are said back to. Well, then you should prepare to make motion to deny. Reject. Put down. Heard my or continue this file.
I will, I will, I will save the. Chair, have we been using the entire, the entire machinery? Commissioner Clark, I recommendation to approve, I recommend approval of this project to the Board of Commissioners, file S zero 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 three dash four. Saw the state second edition requesting creation of non residential lots in approximately five acre each. On two parcels, approximately forty five acres. Solid R five located with section sixty eight township seven mark range to west ways you read in Bonner County's Bonner County. With two Bonner County. I mean that it is in accord with the Bonner County revised code as enumerated in the following. inclusion one proposed subdivision is in accord with surfaces of pedal well and rural five zones. inclusion two, the site is physically suitable for proposed developments. inclusion three, the design of the proposed subdivision will not adversely impact Bonner County after initiation. As identified in the conference. Any adverse impacts potential for impact shall be relegated as a condition of. inclusion four, the public and private services including but not limited to water, sewage, services, solid land, fire protection, urgency services and school facilities and transportation. Will serve the proposed subdivision for a path. conclusion five, the proposed subdivision will not cause some expenses to this that will cause future revenue for the public at large to be exposed to hazards. Health and safety. inclusion six. Design of the proposed subdivision or related improvements will will provide for coordinated access, county system roads and with adjacent properties. And will not include the use of public easements for actions to go through the proposed subdivision. Those transportation system designed adequately and safely serve future revenues for users. Without adversely impacting the existing transportation system by reducing the quality of your level of service, creating hazard. inclusion seven, the proposed subdivision is designed by the design criteria. Where subdivision set forth in chap, subchapter six, two of this chapter. Conclusion eight, proposed subdivision is not in conflict with policies and Bonner County. Recommendations based upon the others in the entitled time step for the narrative testimony received in this hearing. Further move to adopt the reason statement had discussed in deliberation in this hearing. In the analysis that's set forth in the staff. And direct planning staff to draft the reasonable statement for reckless promotion. As set forth in Idaho code, section sixty seven dash six five three five, upchair sign, trans, it's all interesting party. Action does not involve me taking up private property.
Well, commissioners, we have a. Second, excuse me, we have a motion. Any commissioner care to discuss or second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion, we got a second. Any commissioner care to discuss the motion? Or second, or excuse me, does any commissioner care to discuss the motion and second before we vote? Great, mission now vote from my left.
Christian Blazer, I. Bishop Clark, uh, Fisher Marvel, I.
Bishop Paulson, I.
Motion carries with forewarning favor not wait. Jump right into our next file. A little bit. Z C six dash twenty five, zone change for rural ten world. Yeah, things requesting his own change from rural ten or five to ten acre property. His own rural ten, project is located off Doris Lane, section six township fifty five north. Range by west boys in Meridian. Does any commissioner have expert communication or conflict of interest disclosed regarding this application of this? No. Neither do I. Staff, your turn.
Thank you, commissioners, Kyle Snyder, Bonner County Planning Staff. Yeah, I'm going to be presenting file Z C zero 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 six dash two five. Which is a zone change rural ten to rural five. Project summary, the applicant again is requesting his own change from rural ten to rural five on one parcel, approximately ten acres in size. Again, the project is located off Doris Lane in section six township fifty five north, range five west, Boise Meridian. Conference plan designation is rural residential five to ten acres. And this request is evaluated evaluated against the standards for rural ten and rural five. And on the right side of the screen there, you can see the exhibit showing the property and the proposal. These are the standards, uh, Bonner County revised code that this project was viewed against. It's quick background on the property, the use is residential and it is currently unflatted. In the size is ten acres. Current zone is rural ten, land use for over residential five to ten acres. And the access is from coming from Doris Lane, which is a privately owned and privately maintained road. On the western side of that property. As far as the environmental service or sorry, the environmental factors and services. So the site does contain map slopes of zero thirty plus percent. Um, on the image on that right, uh, there's a lot of color, but that is the slope light are with a greater breakdown. So a lot of the green you're seeing is the. Five to ten percent slopes. The site does not contain mapped wetlands, does not contain frontage on any lakes, rivers or streams. Parcel is within SFHA zone D, per the firm panel shown. The site has Bonner gravelly ashy silt, well, zero to four percent slopes. Soil type is. Association well drained and classifies as all areas of prime farmland. As far as the services, individual well and individual septic systems. Fire is fire services provided by West Pond, right, Fire District. Power is a vista utilities and it is within. The district of West Bonner School District eighty three. As far as the agency review and public comment, no agency comments were received for this file. Um, there were two no comments received from DEQ and Idaho Transportation Department. All are the agencies does not reply. And no comments were received at the time of the staff report. Oh, there's a, there's that again. So this is B C R C twelve dash three two three for the rural ten area. Rural R ten in areas designated as rural residential and comprehensive plan that meet one or more of the following criteria. One, R A characterized by slopes that are steeper than thirty percent. Located within critical wildlife habitat as identified by federal, state or local agencies. C contain prime agricultural soils and D served by a network of public. And or private roadways that generally do not meet applicable roadway standards set forth in title two. Public roads of this code or appendix A private roads, this title or are absent. E within the floodway and F contain limited access to public services. Our five in areas designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan. That are already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acres. Density and or do not meet the criteria for arts and above. So there's those standards again, we'll get to a little more detail here. So rural ten characterized by stop by slopes steeper than thirty percent. So the subject lot does not appear to be characterized by stop slopes steeper than thirty percent as shown in the G I S light R image. Slops on the property appear to follow existing trails and roads. And or associated with tree coverage. According to line use portion of the comprehensive plan for density ranges and. Properties that are leveled to moderately sloped are appropriately sized to be five to ten acres. Created within critical wildlife habitat, no critical wildlife area was determined by any public agency. Additionally, G I S data does not show the property within any critical wildlife habitat area. Contains primac soils, so the parcel is made up entirely of Bonner gravelly ashy silt. Zero to four percent slopes, this falls under the cut or the designation of all areas or prime farmland. Or the natural resources component, the land capability classification is three S. Class three soils have severe limitations that reduce the choice of plants or require special conservation practices or both. Subclass S is made up of soils that have soil limitations within the rooting zone such as shallow. Shallowness of the rooting zone, stones, low moisture holding capacity, low fertility that is difficult to correct and salinity or sodium content. There's just the G I S image showing that property entirely within that Bonner gravelly ashy silt. Served by a network of public and or private roadways that generally do not meet. Likeable roadway standards. So access to the site is currently provided by Doris Lane, which is privately owned and maintained road. With connection to Dry Creek Road, which a section of it was Bonner County owned and privately maintained easement. Which further connects to Hoodoo Loop, a Bonner County owned and maintained public right. As far as within the floodway, the subject parcel is not located within a map floodway, or the firm panel shown. Uh, contain limited access to public services, the parcel has access to public services. Public services that are available for this property include West pond, right, Fire District, Bonner County EMS and Sheriff and a visit utilities. Talking about R five, developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acres. Within twelve hundred feet of the subject property, there are twenty six individual parcels or lots. It appears most surrounding properties in the immediate area are developed at five plus acres. There are fifteen parcels within twelve hundred feet of this project that are developed with one dwelling per five acres. And the closest rural five zoning district borders the subject property to the east. Uh, and or does not meet criteria for R ten. The subject property does not appear to be characterized by steep slopes thirty plus percent or greater. It does not have any identified critical wildlife habitat, it is not within a map floodway. It does have access to public services and is served by a network of public and private roads. The property does contain soil that is considered all prime or all areas of prime farmland. There's just a G I image, G I S image shown obscenity of the that project, that twelve hundred foot that I was just referring to. Are there any questions for me?
Let's learn the soil situation a little bit, so it seems like. The soil in general is our all areas of prime farmland, but this soil on the specific property is like sub designated as like. Basically not prime because of.
Exactly, it kind of. Okay.
Used perplexity to learn that conociations, the soil is mostly made of one main kind of soil, not a mix of many types. Thank you, Kyle.
Cool, thank you.
Is the uh applicant or their representative present tonight? Do you care for them? Don't have to. Yes. You want like a second? Do you want? Sure. Uh, the only thing I have to say is that they uh made a mistake, it says David Idaho Land Trust, it's actually Davis Idaho Land Trust. But I don't know if that makes difference or not. But. That's all I got to say about it. Okay. All right, Chair opened the hearing public testimony for this hearing, commissioner, I believe zero, yes, zero written comments regarding this file. Are there any writ, other written statements to be entered into the record at this time, staff?
We've never seen the list, true.
Alright. And so we're sending the person. Are we done? Uh, does any prepared share public testimony about this file about this time? Good ten awkward seconds. Anybody don't lie with their hand? Chair close the hearing public testimony. We will forego rebuttal. And the commissioners were now deliberate this file, commissioners deliberate. Okay. New style of doing.
I mean, it it does appear that. The characteristics of the site better suit. Yeah. You have evidence of that surround. They develop. Fifteen of those ones. Well, I still.
I thought the slope map was really interesting, the letter slope map.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot.
I think I'm.
Minor dream.
Yeah. I think we're looking at two track roads in there, I think that's what's in the stripes.
Yeah. Does reveal, you don't see. In the course of the.
Yeah. Director.
Yeah, so if you go to the. Last appendix C of the staff report, you'll have your reason, statement analysis or your land use decision making work. So to help again to guide your deliberation on on the two zone changes, so you'll see the same. Um, same worksheet, um. With that, we have, we, this is a little bit different than your subdivision one, that one's a. We're going to keep refining it, this is kind of a more polished version, but yes. It's called back to that state statute that we're referring to sixty seven sixty five thirty five uh two, um. And then uh, one thing I would ask, given kind of what I'm hearing when I go to the board with these type of files is. You have like some analysis on soils and some analysis on the characterized by steep slopes. Um, if you can not just adopt the the analysis, but also expand upon why and um. Why this body, you know, how, some of this is a little bit subjective, to be honest, like characterized by steep slopes. That can be somewhat subjective and yes, the planning commission is aware and we're going to meet next week and start talking about. The zoning descriptions and how to make them a little more black and white, a little less subjective. But given we what we what you're analyzing, what's in the code right now, um, to help the board with your understand your deliberation, you can give some detail uh as to. You know, even though there is and it does contain some slopes, like how is that an air, not a characteristic of this parcel, right? So we've used numericals as a percentage of the property in the past, we've used. Uh, I, we've seen a whole bunch of different ways to to analyze that characteristic by. Um, and then I think uh Mister Paulson kind of started with some uh. Comments and concerns are uh on the analysis on primax oil, so just kind of deliberate on that, expand upon a little bit as to um your interpretation of that code. So if you, if you want to use that decision making worksheet to to help guide your deliberations and add to your findings of fact. Any other questions for me?
Not yet.
Okay.
Alright, so going by this new worksheet, standing the concern scene, prior to the preliminary decision on his ownership, the government advisor gave the. Particular facts in certain sense, speak was was on sheet in terms of the evolving standards in finite, but have such use. Use that. That should use the proposed location. Not in conflict with the policies of the adopted comprehensive plan. That's the evidence from the record that supports your pushing and rational.
It really comes down to right here. Walking down. He was staffed a good job, it's present and look at. And you can see by looking at. You know, light are in combination box books and songs. I would call it rare. Yeah, there's any new slopes rare than thirty. Well.
Yeah.
From your position. You look at the development footprint around the around the site. Also, there's good evidence that. Majority of. Fifteen of. Were are developed at one.
Very consistent.
Yeah, that, yeah. Um, what was it, I thought soils, but I know you, yeah, you made a good. Commissioner made a comment about soils. And even though they're. And even though there are, sounds like the farmable soils we just poured, I mean, they'll suck up the soils.
So they're all limited, I think, is what the
Yeah.
Designation ones.
So that kind of points away from our ten to our five. Access through private and public roads, this this sites got access through private. It's not out. Pretty evident. That, that, that suits our buy better. Not within a floodway. And and not doesn't have, that has access to pretty much all the public services. So, and I think it's the evidence is is clear, but it's, it suits our five better than our ten.
And also based on most of your comments, it beats the, one of the other criteria there in uh I see, I see seven dash six five one one, which is it says, who gets old and demonstrable at first impact upon the delivery of services. Maybe it it does not, right, for people simply, the access that it has.
Right, it's not critical wildlife area either. Mentioned in the criteria.
Yeah, as far as
Yeah, and you look at the outline area too, just to take a zoom out, you tend to look at what's, what's on there, it's on the next.
I think we can tell that lack of the comment as well, that it it really fits the use. Yes, so use, not just use code.
Want to hear the meeting, the adequate evidence and the total non-conflict policies. That's found in the adopted implementation.
Record supports satisfies twelve dash two six. The staff, staff, there was really, there wasn't anything And I think you just discussed a lot of those reasons why they're or did not. For the evidence, the records, really no evidence of conflict.
Right.
I'm, I'm satisfied with twelve dash six two. And I think Michigan are covered twelve dash six three collectively. We can save the reasons why it seems rural five. Instead of rural ten, which staff office has a good trouble. Putting up different Yeah. I think that satisfies twelve three. Both, I'm satisfied with staff and uh parts of comments. I agree. That's basically two on. Yeah, on the standards for donation.
Yeah, I'm not as much.
I'm satisfied with with you discussed and uh I am.
Think Commissioner, your move.
Mr. Paulson, I'll note to recommend rule of this project, who the board county commissioner survive all CC zero 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 six, that's C five, pressing his own change on roll ten, roll five. Finding it is not a conflict with policies of Bonner County Conference and Plan and part of revised code hasn't been created. There's one, the proposal is not in conflict with conflict with the policies of Bonner County Conference and Plan. There's two, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with Title twelve in Bonner County revised code and was found to be in compliance. There's three, the proposal is in accordance with purpose of little five and zoning district. Provided at chapter twelve, chapter three, title twelve, Bonner County revised code. This, this decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff approached. Was prepared, testimony received in this hearing for the move to adopt the recent statement. As discussed in deliberation at this hearing, analysis has set forth in staff and board org as amended during this hearing. And direct planning staff to draft to the recent statement to reflect discussion as set forth in I don't know, section six seven dash six five three five. At the chair's side and try to call parties. This action does not result in taking any problem. Uh motion.
Uh any commissioner care to discuss the motion in a second before you vote? I left.
Mr. Clark.
Motion carries the four voting against and four voting in favor and not against. We have one final file review tonight now, patient for don't change. CC two dash twenty five, roll five suburban. Yep, again, requesting his own change from roll five to suburban, the eight, the five acre and six point five, six acre properties or zones. Roll five. The project site is located off Hatchet Road in section five, outshiped by Mark Range to west. Commissioner have any expert communication or conflict interest to disclose at this time?
No.
Your turn.
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening, Danny Brett, planning staff for the record. We're here to discuss files, ZC zero 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 two dash two five, this is zone change from little five suburban. These are applicable standards for which is a staff review or the staff report was reviewed against. As found in the staff report. So the applicants are proposing a zone change from rural five to suburban to align the zoning with the adjacent parcels and to the comprehensive plan designation of transition. The parcels are located off Coca-Cola loop on Hatchet Road, the parcels are five acres and six point five six acres in size. The current comprehens- comprehensive plan designation is transition. Little background on uh these two parcels in the proposal. Um one has a single family dwelling without buildings and the other one has an existing auto repair shop, they're both unplatted. Once again, the parcel sizes are five acres and six point five six acres. It is zone rule five and the land use designation is transition. Access to these parcels are on Hatchet Road, which is a privately owned and maintained gravel road. Via Coca-Cola loop and Bonner County owned and maintain uh paved public right of way. So environmental factors on these parcels, they do contain map slopes from zero and up to and above thirty percent grade. The parcels do not contain any mapped wetlands and the parcels do not contain any mapped waterfront or streams. Parcels are within special flood hazard zone X for the firm panel one six zero one seven C zero nine five zero E with an effective date of November eighteenth, two thousand nine. Services that are available to these parcels are individual wells, individual septic systems. Fire protections afforded through Saguil. Fire district powers of this utilities is within Lake Bonner A School District number eighty four. These, there are two soil types found um on these parcels and they're both listed up there on the screen and the to the uh right is an imagery of those soils, the one in green is treble uh gravel sandy loam, five to twenty percent slope grade, um is classified as all areas of prime farmland. In the brown section there, um I like brown is a Bonner gravelly ash silt loam, zero to four percent slopes. And that also is all areas of prime farmland. So the classification um for this parcel by the copland is transition. And the way that looks is the transition classification is reserved for those areas in county where a mixture of land uses can occur. Which may include higher density residential uses, commercial, industrial and light industrial uses. Due to the intensity of the land, these areas require primary transportation routes, urban like water and sewer, fire and police services. So the rural uh district is established to allow for low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. The purpose can be accomplished by one, limited residential density and permit, permitted uses to those that are compatible with rural character and nearby resource production districts and the sites can be adequately supported by rural service levels. Two, allowing for small scale farming and forestry activities and tourism and recreation uses that can be supported by rural service levels that are compatible with rural character. Three, encouraging conservation development configurations that create permanent open space or farming areas protect sensitive environmental features, reduce, reducing infrastructure costs and or enhance recreational opportunities. The R five in the areas designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan that are already developed at or near the one dwelling per five acre density and or do not meet the criteria for our ten. The suburban district per BCRC twelve dash three two four B. Use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated by the comprehensive plan as transition. Urban growth area, resort community or suburban, suburban growth area in the comprehensive plan where a network of hard surface roads provide good access to primary transportation routes. Or potential public transportation systems, urban services may not be available immediately, but they're capable of being extended or constructed in an area. So this is a breakdown of the rural five and the suburban district of those uh two paragraphs I've just read to you. And looking at that, um we look to see if these parcels are developed at or near one dwelling unit per five acres. So according to BCRC twelve dash three two three. Um number two, roll five in areas designated rural des- sorry, designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan that are already developed at or one of the dwelling units per five acre density and do not meet the criteria for R ten. In December two thousand eight, the rural district was established in Bonner County under the current code. Two property classifications were included within this district, rural ten and rural five. A determination was made in two thousand eight that these parcels, parcels met the criteria for rural five classification. The transition designation was assigned to these properties in two thousand five. So this proposal is currently has a designation or current po- comprehensive plan designation transition. This designation is reserved for those areas of the county where a mixture of land uses can occur, which may include high density residential uses. Commercial, industrial and light industrial. Due to the intensity of land uses, these areas require primary transportation routes, urban like water and sewer services, fire and police services. The current zoning assigned to these parcels do not align with the comprehensive plan designation on the properties. Served by a network of hard surface roads. So the proposal is within a network of hard surface right of ways. Uh highway ninety five, a Idaho state owned and maintain paved right of way that is approximately a half mile away. Coca-Cola loop, which is a Bonner County owned and maintain paved uh right of way and is approximately point one five miles away. That's Rosie privately owned and maintain gravel right of way. So urban service capabilities. This area of the county has most quote unquote urban services as defined by BCRC twelve eight two one. However, the general area lacks a publicly maintained water distribution system or sewage collection. BCRC twelve dash three two four B recognizes when any of the urban services are not immediately, immediately available, but are capable of being extended or constructed in the area. And suburban zoning may be appropriate. Each parcel in this proposal has an individual well septic system. Proposal is served by a uh public electricity telephone system and has access to hard surface roads. Variety of housing types and densities um can be identified within a quarter mile puzzle that align with modern counter revised code twelve dash three three two. Table three point two, the residential use table. Such as single family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, RV dwelling units and vacation rentals, for example. A variety of densities can be identified within a quarter mile that meet the standards of BCRC twelve dash four one two. Table four dash one and BCRC twelve dash four one one and table four point two, that same dimensional standard tables. Both lots and parcels are developed with it, with at least one dwelling unit. Lots of parcels range in size from uh zero point one five to thirty one acres in size in this area. Allowing those accessory and compatible non-residential uses that are compatible with urban residential communities. Uses are complimentary to the existing housing in the area or service stations, restaurants, storage facilities, RV parks, recreational activities, businesses, post office. And one of Bonner County's largest employers. These uses can be found in BCRC twelve dash three three three, subchapter three point three, the use provision um tables in sequence. Encouraging conservation developments, the water counter revised code does not require the creation of a conservation development in any district, the code encourages conservation developments in all districts. For those developments in the county, BCRC twelve dash six thirty conservation subdivisions. Guys, property owners and have developed a conservation subdivision, conservation subdivisions encourage clustering to help reduce infrastructure costs and dedicate open space. These are the following agencies um that replied with comment to this file. Um all our agencies did not comment. And those full comments are found in your packets this evening. That includes my presentations, I can take any questions you might have about this proposal.
That large employer, that's the encoder company, right?
Correct.
Questions for Mr. Brett?
You're welcome.
Yeah, but yeah, you're their representative.
He just wanted to put the map out of my presentation.
Yeah.
Let me pull that up.
Dan Perbel, project representative. We're gonna wait for him to pull that up, so.
Dan, you stop me when you see the map you want.
That's it.
That's one of the, okay, works. Alright.
Okay, so as we can see on the map there, we are looking at uh the, the northern five that's R five or the and then the uh westerly five that's circled and circled in red, they're both encircled in red. And right up through the middle of them, we have suburban zone. Uh which was approved a few years back. We also have suburban zone south of them and we have a rural service center directly in the same neighborhood. Neighborhood is, is uh all Hatcher family, they've owned the property out there for many, many, many decades, it uh the grandpa before the dad, before the kids, which are all in their sixties now, so. And they owned a very large area out there and I'll let uh Ann Hatcher here speak out right about their some of the things that went on with the Hatcher family out there. Directly to the right is the railroad, Arlington Northern Railroad, that strip of blue that runs up through there along the arc between our project site and encoder. You can see encoder there is zoned industrial, we have the You can see encoder there is zoned industrial, we have the brown area there, commercial. Um that's where that log cabin is that they've had a few people come and go selling just to the south. And the other rural service centers, the post office. So what we have here is a a very good mix that fits the transition comp plan. That overlays the entire area. And what we do know is the transition. Comprehensive plan designation does not fit the R five. Doesn't fit the R five zone whatsoever. In the. In the staff report. It's been remarked on a couple of different times, I'm just trying to get to the. Trying to find the page that has the reference table. Check table. Okay, so we can jump through that to try to keep this short. Um rural five designations, it says R five in areas designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan. This is not rural residential in the comp plan. Suburban designated transition in the comp plan. Our target is to have suburban, it matches up with the existing. Comprehensive plan designation, that basically cuts out the R fives. Said they don't fit with the comp plan, suburban, our target does. We're looking at the uh served by nec- uh network of hard service roads. Staff showed us uh highways just to the right runs north and south out there a half mile away. Coca-Cola Loop also paved running to the south of the project. And we have, we have uh Hatcher Road runs right up through the project, project, you can see it labeled there. Um it's more of a shared driveway sort of thing, um again, we call it Hatcher Flats or um. The Hatcher Zone to the north up there also, you can see above our project up there, that's also a Hatcher owned. So one of the things that we do need to address though is the urban services. Now, so we have a description of what the urban services are in the code. The urban services are required basically for the suburban zone classification. But if we read through there. On what exactly is urban services? It gives us a clarification of what we have to work with. B C R C twelve three twenty four suburban district. The suburban district is established to promote the development of residential uses, which we are asking for that. Located on the edges of the incorporated cities or other developed communities, which is Westmond area and the Coca-Cola area. Where urban sewer and water services are either available or have the potential to become available in the near future by reason of their inclusion. Into the service. Or city service areas. We have a lot of small lots around that wrap around Lake Coca-Cola, as you all well know. All in suburban area. So back on the uh the urban services description, it does say sewage collection, and this is the B C R C twelve eight twenty one defines the urban services. As sewage collection, treatment. And disposal systems not to include individual septic systems. Unless subject to an approved sewer management agreement. So we can then define. We can define the urban services for sewer. Which um would only need to include the approved sewer management system. Should have marked my pages better here. So that was paraphrase, I'm gonna go through and read the twelve eight twenty one urban services publicly or privately. Maintained water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection, treatment and disposal systems. Not to include individual septic tanks, which is what we have. And drain field systems. Which is what we have or community septic tanks and drain filled systems. The caveat is unless subject to an approved sewer management agreement. So we can do the individual systems, individual drain filled systems and individual septic tanks if we have. An approved sewer management agreement. Which everyone, everyone. In Hatcher Flats has has said that they will sign into a sewer management agreement, we have one written up here. And it talks about um the duties and what needs to be done. We have the the course, the recitals of where we're at and what we're doing and what we're talking about in revised code, individual sewer systems responsibilities. Um we have uh the particular language that goes through there, we have the routine maintenance and inspection layout. And what's required of that, we have notice. Of failure or hazard and what they need to do with that happens, such as notify the health uh Panhandle Health Department immediately and take corrective actions. We have the shared grain fields, we have on a couple of these. We have uh shared wells on a couple of these in that area. We have all the data here that talks about how everybody is responsible and how they're responsible. The covenant would run with the land. Uh amendment and termination language indemnification and severability. This would be signed by all the owners in that area. Who are affected by this and we're going to be doing a land unit development following up to. Do some more organization out there, it started getting strewn about a little bit, so we're that's our final mission. So this would be a recorded agreement. According to the vote that gets us through that and it can be the same way on water system. So we have what we need in the urban services, we have uh opposition. In the R five where it sits now, we have that opposition to the existing transition comp plan. It, the request fits exactly what with the comp plan is now in the transition zone. Any questions might be able to answer.
Girl, questions for uh. And did you say that in one of the seasons?
Yes, okay.
Been here all night. I know, right? I'm like last, I'm like. I know, right? Okay, I'm Anna Hatcher and of course I'm in favor of this, um. So the Hatters have owned the land for over a hundred years, it's been handed down generations. Um right now, we actually have a few generations living on there from. All the way back and all of my husband's brothers live there, um. Except for the two and a half acres that my mother-in-law gave to Pastor um. Bah that owns runs the south side church across the street, which they donated that land to the Bible camp back in the seventies. Cause all of that land was owned by his grandparents. Um including the White House and the barn again across the street from Coca-Cola. That was his grandparents' farm. So all of us Hatters live on Hatcherville and we're just trying to get it all fixed and suburban, so. Yeah. I think that's about. We need to ha- the compound, yeah, the hot the Hatcher compound that, yeah, that some people call it, yeah, that. Cause we have our auto shop on there and they're like, you know, Hatcher Road, Hatcher last name, do you have a Hatcher bank? And yeah, we get jokes all the time that we live on the Hatcher compound. So other than Joseph, um he's the only one that's not a Hatcher that lives on Hatcher, so. Yeah. Thanks.
They get just a bit more. If we can get back to that. Again, please. I did, what I didn't pass through is is what we're looking at and parcel sizes right there in the group. And I guess we're not gonna be looking at, we got two and a half to the southeast, we have. Page eleven.
Well, I thought I thought he was done, he sat down, so I killed the presentation.
You got spring in my step, bounce right back up, okay, so down the lower right in the purple, the um. Rural Service Center, that is a two and a half acre piece, right next to it, to the left is a four acre piece. We have a couple of three acre pieces there in the existing suburban zone. Just north of the rural service center, the uh the one in there where the pastor owns, another two and a half acre there. So I just wanted to show that we did have some smaller pieces right inside the compound itself.
The yeah, the the one right above the purple right there makes the rest.
One more item. Um on uh twelve dash four twelve density and dimension standards, we're looking at the chart. Right out of the code for suburban zone. They have a note in here that minimum lot size where urban service and water services are not available. Two and a half acres. So person can go to two and a half acres in here if you don't have any urban sewer or water, so. That kind of crosses over onto the uh the urban services description, so. Um and stepping downward, if we have urban sewer, we can go to twenty thousand square feet, so. I think we're right in that area and and the. Don't have to run too far, look too far to see that it fits the suburban zone a whole lot better than the R. Five zone that does not fit in its comp plan designation, so now. That's all, thanks.
And chair. Chair opens a hearing of public testimony. We didn't perceive any public confidence. Oh, you're two in here, the same one. You know, two people online. Close to hearing a public testimony. For rebuttals. Go to deliberation. I should just deliberate. My chance, write our worksheet here. Bob.
Yeah, very similar class, yeah. Well, the comp plan is transitional, which is very liberal. Uh yeah, sorry, pointing at you and say it's not compatible. Looking at how transition has been implementing these areas so far. I see no conflict with.
I wonder why hasn't it been already? Okay. Different discussion. Is there any adverse impact upon the delivery of services? Public service, I think proximity, it's clear there's proximity right there, you know. All those paved road, get highway, just hundred yards over. That should be. Plenty adequate, uh to get public services of any type in and out of there. It's quicker than it's possible, we can.
Mr. Roll spent some time. Justifying the utilities. Being available, I don't see any, they're very close and so obvious those roads are. Give up whatever you chose. Yeah, implemented or the. The organization, I think, or used.
Whatever the compound needs. What else? I think we satisfied that first one.
Yeah. Application documentation probably have kept by the applicants fishing DC African contents criteria. And definitely, I think it was due for this application or something, but the presentation I have tried. Backed up by a staff meeting prepared as well.
I agree that's satisfied. Why? I guess we just covered that.
I agree.
Same thing that I was coming. So it does have to be requirements or.
Yeah.
Look like to take the guy, I would like to meet the guy, he had that shape, our soul.
Are you talking about mine? That, okay, so that was because all of that used to be one piece. And my mother-in-law um wanted to give my husband his dad's shop. And so his piece was behind hers, which was the five acres.
Plus the shop.
And then so she didn't wanna give him the gazebo, cause the gazebo was on her land, so she went around the gazebo. And so, right, so it goes around the gazebo, so there's an actual. Like a road back there, but you can't see it on the map, but yeah, so she went around the gazebo, so it was still on her land and not on my husband's land. So yeah, it's a really weird shape there.
Every one of those lines is a story. Some poor Dan Proble that draw those line and some maps on.
I was there.
Yes.
It was this damn problem, this is.
I think that's satisfied, thrilled that sweet sweet my honey.
I agree.
Right. Pretty sure. Suburban zoning this pick.
It makes and it also helps strangely shaped uh R five and ten. At suburban. I get a little more in currency.
Right.
Removes a uh.
I think it was satisfied all.
I agree.
I don't have any other.
Commissioner care to make a, and commissioner make care to move.
Oh.
Gonna make a movement.
I would, uh Bishop Blazer. Uh maintains motion, direct approval, moves, recommend approval. Uh to the morning candidate Fisherville project file, C C zero 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 two dash five requesting a zone change. From rural five suburban on five and five and six point five generally open in section five. Martin, who was devised, who is in writing, calling, prove to law. Who wants to go, was those not in conflict with Austin, but having proper plan? Which two that opposed to view compliance with title twelve, modern county vice, and is not even clients. Which did from the occasion for great purpose of the suburban zoning issue by this chapter. At chapter three, title twelve, modern county vice. This recommendation based upon evidence submitted up to the time of staff report, which comparative and testimony received this hearing. I fully moved to adopt the reason statement as discussed in the liberation. At this hearing and the analysis of that one from the staff report. Or is that during this hearing? And recommend staff draft, using state reflect as motion set those that either book section six, seven, dash six, five, five. Other chair sign and transports all interested parties. It's actually not so. He should discuss for second motion. Well, second. I commissioner have moved, and another commissioner has also moved, we have a motion in second. Uh, official vote from my left. Official laser. Hi. Need to talk about my life. Triple eyes. I should carry before voting favor. The staff have any reminders, updates, announcements? Camp songs to share with the mission or the.
So I do like to inform the commission whenever your decisions are challenged, um, so. It was a hearing for the RV park, it was appealed to the board. Um, that the board finalized and concluded their hearing and um continued it without deliberating, so. Given the depth of that, they wanted more time than one hearing, so that continued hearing and just for deliberation. I'm not gonna accept any new evidence, just for deliberation is gonna happen on the seventh in the afternoon, I believe, at like one thirty or something like that. So uh I'll let you guys know next month what the outcome is of that decision by the board, so just a heads up. Um, we also had uh. The bike park commercial use permit, which I don't think this body heard, I think it went from the hearing examiner to the board. Um, so that was remanded by the court, so it was challenged from district court for an a lack of a reason statement. Um, we had a cell tower that was approved last year. Um, same thing, got remanded by a lack of a reason statement.
Yeah, that was.
Yep.
Same.
Yep. Yes, the reason statement is becoming like a.
Yeah.
The, the new norm, um, what the court is saying is that they will not scour the record, which means we're not gonna review the transcripts to figure out what your deliberation was that supported your decision. It's clearly, it has to be in the written decision. Cause what the written decision is, so that's why we're spending so much more time on deliberation and reason statement and. Bigger, more in-depth um decision letters that inc- that incorporate a lot of the staff's analysis from the. From the decision or from the staff reports, so. That's why we're not crafting findings of fact, this really. It's, it's not really, uh. Let's see, how can I put this? It's important to do at all decision-making levels, but it really is the most important when it comes to the board's decisions. So under very rare circumstances, um, does your decision become the final decision of the county? So that being said, we are changing chapter, chapter two a little bit, so that when we have a. Conflict of interest at the board's level, let's say I had two commissioners that can't hear a file. It's on appeal, then your decision becomes the final decision. So we've had one where we only had two commissioners seated. And it was a tie vote, so then it's a, well, that's not really an affirmative action by the county, it's, it's a tie, it's a lack of a decision, right? Yeah, so what, then what decision gets challenged at the judicial level? When you don't have a final decision, so that would be the zoning commission decisions, so. Um, we're going to craft, I don't know how that works with the recommendations, because. You guys can't have the authority to make a decision on a zone change, you can only make recommendations, so we'll figure that one out. Um, yeah. So we're, we're crafting some minor changes, uh, but impactful ones to chapters one and two, and then you'll see some pretty substantial changes to chapter six here by the end of the, end of the summer, hopefully, so. Um, that, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on appeals, and I haven't seen any other appeals from this body.
Um. Wedding venue.
Yeah, that one hasn't been decided, the wedding venue, um, down in Coca-Cola and the same, yeah. That was challenge, I think that one goes to oral argument in district court in the end of summer, I wanna say September, but I could be wrong, so don't hold me to that. Yeah, we, we saw a lot of files. It was odd, but last year we had four files within like a month and a half, all get challenged to district court, so. It's a rough time. We haven't had any sense, so. Um, that's all I have for you guys, so thank you for getting through the, the stuff tonight and for the more in-depth um discussion and kind of the more. Refined deliberation, so.
Okay. Again, uh. You're, you're in the field twice. You do a three mile, uh, three. Okay, and, and for all in line.